All right, we're gonna call our meetings in order with the special allegiance. All right, we're gonna hold the August 19 regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the August 26 2019 special meeting minutes? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. For our presentations, we have a presentation of our reaccreditation award to the Police Department by Christine Crocker of the Rhode Island Police Accreditation Commission, the Executive Director of the Rhode Island Police Accreditation Commission, and she's gonna be joined by Detective Kuzman. So I'm gonna call them up to the podium.
Good evening. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here, not for the first time, but for the second time, to recognize the Narragansett Police Department for showing that they truly are a professional and forward-thinking police department. For those of you, and I feel bad that I have my back to you, who may not be familiar with what accreditation really is, I try to compare it to hospital accreditation. I don't think any of us would have surgery in a hospital that's not accredited, or we're not gonna spend thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a year to send our children to a college or university that's not accredited. In today's challenging environment where law enforcement is facing new challenges daily, it only makes sense that they're following industry-recognized best practices. They're the gatekeepers of our communities. Accreditation provides them the tools to ensure that their personnel have the guidelines to perform their job, the skills that they need, the training, and this agency has proven that for the second time. As I'm sure Detective Kuzman can say, attaining accreditation, although it's not easy, it is the easier part. Maintaining accreditation, proving that you're adhering to these standards, takes a lot of time and effort, and you should all be very proud of your police department. They were the eleventh agency in the state to attain state accreditation out of forty-six agencies that are in the program, and we still have agencies who have not yet attained accreditation, and the Narragansett Police Department is being recognized as achieving reaccreditation tonight. That's quite the honor, and you should be very proud of it. During their initial accreditation, now Chief Corrigan was the accreditation manager, so he can attest to the work involved, and as the chief, I'm sure it served him quite well, having been the accreditation manager. Chief, if I could call you up to receive your award. On behalf of the Rhode Island Police Accreditation Commission, the Narragansett Police Department has voluntarily complied with the required standards as set forth by the commission and is hereby awarded this certificate of accreditation, effective this third day of September 2019, and hereby shall be recognized as an accredited agency for a term of three years. And Detective, three years will come again very quickly. Thank you and have a good evening.
Congratulations, thank you for coming, and congratulations to the department. Next, we have a presentation from the FERMAN Triathlon, from Fred Bartlett of the FERMA. Is he here?
Welcome. Good evening, everybody. This is the 2030 year of the FERMA Triathlon in Narragansett. FERMA is an acronym for Fisk Independent Race Management. It's a company out of Massachusetts. Bill Fisk is the owner and operator of probably the largest on the East Coast triathlon company. He is in his mid-seventies and is retiring, so this will be the last year for the FERMA Triathlon, which is scheduled this Sunday at 7:00 AM in Narragansett Town Beach. Part of the reason that we do this triathlon is that half the profits, half the net profits of the race go back to the individual community or organization. So, over twenty-three years now, FERMA has turned back close to two hundred thousand dollars to the town of Narragansett in the form of recreation for parks of recreation, scholarship funds, fees for leak fees, things like that, that the Recreation Department can use at their own discretion, that's not budgeted from the taxpayers' money. I don't work for FERMA, I'm a local resident, I live right down the street, and I've just helped out the last twenty-three years trying to get the triathlon community, the athletic community involved here in Narragansett because it's such a great place. And so again, this Sunday will be our last year. I'll probably come and see you guys one more time with some more checks. So these are the checks from last year's race. Three thousand dollars will go to the Parks and Recreation Department from last year's race, and hopefully this weekend, our numbers will be up because it will be the last year here in Narragansett. If you've been around the town lately, you've seen a lot of orange arrows, green arrows, and markings, that's me, for the direction of the race course. Those markings will fade out within one or two, three months, and you won't even know that a triathlon existed here before. So I want to thank all the councils, all the people over the twenty-three years that have helped us put this race on. Couple people in particular, Tom Tessitore, who's with the Parks and Recreation, has been there from day one, helping me out and growing this race. We're down to about three hundred people now, we used to have six or seven hundred, eight hundred people, but triathlon, the sport is kind of going downhill as far as it's reached its peak. So I want to thank everybody involved, the Police Department, the Fire Departments, all the people, all the volunteers that I have. I'm the volunteer coordinator, but I like to look at myself as the chief bottle washer. Everything that I can get done in Narragansett, because we have such a great community, I try to get done here. So I want to thank everybody, and again, I'll see you one more time with some checks, and hopefully not a year late, okay? So thank you very much, and I'll get this to you.
Thank you. Yes, Steve. All right, we have our consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull number six.
All right, is there any other item? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through five?
Still move.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item six is a motion to approve twenty-one day pedal licenses in conjunction with the calamari festivals to be held on September 7, 2019, at Veterans Memorial Park, subject to state and local regulations. Is there one?
Second.
Discussion, Jill?
Yes, the Director of the Chamber of Commerce is in the audience, so I thought she might like to take the opportunity to come up and talk about the calamari festival.
Yes, I would, thank you very much, appreciate it. I have a couple of housekeeping notes, but the calamari festival, you'll see the orange, green arrows from the FERMA, but you'll also see a purple squid here and there around town, and that's us. The festival is September 7, which is Saturday, and it runs from eleven to five, and it looks like we've dodged the Dorian, and so it looks like we're gonna be okay for Saturday, but we will put updates on both our Chamber of Commerce website and the Rhode Island Calamari Fest website in case anything crazy happens weather-wise. This year, you can purchase tickets online and in advance by either going to either one of those websites, and the tickets are only twenty dollars, and children twelve and under come in free. And for the twenty dollars, you get to taste calamari from nine different restaurants, and we've got them coming from all over the place. Our local favorites, George's, Coast Guard House, Mariner Grill, Chair Five, The Muse. We also have Dance Carriage Inn, Habersham, Parma, Ristorante, and Skyline and Waterplace coming down the province. Also in the festival area, we're gonna have twenty-four vendors and food trucks for those of you who don't like fish and would rather a burger or something else. And for the children, we have toucher trucks, go-karts, the Batmobile, a model squid net's gonna be set up so that the kids understand what's going on with our fisheries. And the South County Plan C A Children's Program people are nice enough to donate their time and their effort to run the children's section with a obstacle course. So for the adults, of course, we have a beer garden, and there are gonna be three bands that everybody can enjoy. I do encourage everyone to come out and support our fishing industry, support the community, and, you know, if I may while I'm up here, take a moment to say thanks to a couple of people. I've been in this position for almost a year now, and the chamber area, or where we are in the tower, serves two purposes. One is as a welcome center, of course, for the town of Narragansett, and the other is for a chamber. And I have to tell you, I have been so incredibly impressed by the town partners and how well everyone has worked with me and worked with each other. I just wanted to give a couple shout-outs while I have the opportunity to do so. First of all, I want to thank the DPW people, especially Ziggy, who is our go-to guy, no matter what happens, we call Ziggy and he makes it happen somehow. So Mike, thanks for sharing him with us. Mike DeLuca has been a really gigantic help to us with the Jingle Run, he's out there in the cold and in the wind and the rain, and it doesn't matter, he does it for us, and is also helping us out with the calamari fest. Steve Wright and his whole team is just phenomenal, what else can you say? And the Lions Club leadership has been second to none, and Ricky, thanks for giving us those gates that we need. Let's see here, and I cannot thank Terry and Kathy and the crowd in the town clerk's office. They are just so knowledgeable, so helpful, have given me such terrific invaluable guidance. I cannot thank you enough, I really cannot thank you enough. And lastly, kind of shout-outs for a couple of you folks, of course, everyone's welcome in the chamber, but Matt, appreciate you giving us a shout-out every once in a while for things we have going on, and Jill, without you, we wouldn't have our hot water, I don't think, and some of our volunteers from URI, so we really appreciate your help on that. And lastly, I just want folks to know, we host it, we host over twenty-five thousand people a year in that facility, believe it or not. We had twenty-seven hundred people walk in there in July alone, so we really appreciate it, and in spite of all of our differences and our issues and what we have going on with each other here, I have to tell you that our visitors who come here are just so incredibly impressed with Narragansett, how clean everything is, how wonderful our people are, how beautiful our whole area is, and today someone wrote in that we should be a national monument. So I just wanted to share that with you, and thank you so much, and I welcome everybody to come in on Saturday.
That starts at eleven AM, correct?
Yes.
All in favor, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item number seven, a motion to approve the purchase and installation services of three MDT tablets and three new police vehicles from Island Tech Services LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Still move. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item eight, a motion to waive current policy and authorize the use of the General Construction Services Contract with Adcorp Restoration Company Incorporated for the renovation to Station Number Three on Boston Egg Road in the amount of fifty-six thousand four hundred sixty dollars.
Still move. Second.
Discussion. All in favor? All other comments?
Shh, sorry about that, I was just reading through something. Is this included in the capital improvements budget already? Does anyone know?
I'm pretty sure that it is. Yes, it is, yes.
All right, thank you.
Correct. Chief, we're approving, yes, we approved it, we talked about it in the workshops. Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item nine is a motion to approve the annual service contract for the interoperable radio communication system from Motorola Incorporated in the amount of thirty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars for the fiscal year 2019-2020, and to authorize the acting town manager to sign the contract after review by the town solicitor.
Still move.
Discussion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item number ten is a motion to approve the purchase of one new Doosan light tower generator from ATS Equipment Incorporated utilizing the Rhode Island Master Price Agreement, MPA Number Ninety-One, in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars.
Still move.
Discussion. This is to help with lighting for some of the night work that's performed. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, motion approved five to zero. I'm sorry, I misspoke, that was, did I just do ten or eleven? Did I skip ten?
No.
All right, item number twelve, a motion to award the bid for road straining services to Safety Marketing Incorporated at their quoted unit prices for the fiscal of the year 2019-2020 and 2020-2021.
Still move.
Discussion. Anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Sorry. Motion approved five to zero.
You did just skip eleven, they pulled the master price.
I think that's why, I saw the same language, okay, so I skipped eleven, I'm sorry about that. Item number eleven is a motion to approve the purchase of one new Doosan air compressor from ATS Equipment utilizing the Rhode Island Master Price Agreement Number Ninety-One in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars.
Still move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item thirteen is a motion to approve the purchase of one Everest ten-foot one-way snow style snowplow from J.C. Madigan Incorporated pursuant to the Greater Boston Police Council contract in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars.
Still move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item fourteen is a motion to award the bid for T-shirts and golf shirts for the Parks and Recreation Department to the lowest bidder, S.P. Designs and Manufacturing, at recorded prices for a one-year period ending September 2, 2020.
Still move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item fifteen is a motion to waive the current policy and authorize the use of the General Construction Services Contract with Adcorp Restoration Company Incorporated for the first-phase renovations to recreational building at the camp on Clark Road in the amount of fifty-eight thousand six hundred forty dollars.
Still move.
Discussion, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item sixteen is a motion to approve change order number one for additional work on the original award and approve the contract amendment for the playing courts rehabilitation project with Joyce Construction Incorporated for the total amount of seventy-one thousand four hundred seventeen dollars.
Still move.
Discussion.
I do have a question for Stephen Wright, if that's all right with you.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming up. I guess my one question would be, what was the idea behind asking for an amendment for this rather than putting it out to bid as a new project?
Sure. So, there are actually two projects. Originally, we had the original eighty-five thousand dollar carry, we're in our capital improvement projects back from 2017, and in 2018-19 budget, we had a hundred and four thousand dollars to increase that amount so we could do these three projects. One was for George C. Tennis Courts, the Clark Road Pickleball Courts, and the Leroy Thompson Boone Street Basketball Court. We put that out the bid in March 29, 2019, that was awarded by the town council on May 20th, and work, the purchase order was awarded on 7/19, July 19, and work started in August. So subsequently, we also awarded ninety thousand in additional funding from this council back on 4/25/19, to do additional courts for this fiscal year starting July 1st. So if you look at what we're trying to do is, we have a contractor in town doing work on existing courts, courts that we're working on, George C. Tennis Pickleball Courts in Leroy Boone Street Basketball Court, and we're looking to do the same work on Christopher Farm Basketball Courts and the George C. Basketball Courts. It makes sense to amend that contract instead of putting it back up the bid, they're gonna use the same unit prices, the same work we're gonna be putting back, we have to put it back, send them away for the winter, put it back up the bid, have them come back in the spring, probably increase prices. The change order is for the existing contract because when they get on site, there is puddling and resurfacing that you can't see until you get on the jobs, so that's sixteen thousand dollars worth is a change order for all three of the existing yardings that we're doing, which I think is very reasonable.
All right, and is your thinking that sincerely receives one response to the initial request that that would be the case again?
Exactly, because this is a unique system. Instead of having to rip up the entire court system and repave it, this is an armor system with a plexi pavement, I give the engineering department credit for executing this system out, and as long as, if you, anything else, if you look about deferred maintenance, it's all over the state talking about deferred maintenance, and I'm a big advocate about maintaining what we have, if you take a look, if you put money into maintaining what we have, and five to seven years down the road maintaining these courts, and not to this kind of money, but just maintaining what we have, these will last for a long time. And so this is something that I think we should just stay on a regular schedule, and to prevent the maintenance of these courts for quite some time.
And just so unclear, you anticipate that if you did put this out to bid, it would be the same one response?
Yes.
Okay.
And what's good about it is, you use the analogy, you house out the bid for painting, and you've got the contractor on site doing a fabulous job, and then you want it unpainted, why would you put it back up the bid? You're happy with the contract, they're doing a good job, there's none of, you know, we've had contractors on jobs that we're not happy with, we're very happy with this contract that they're doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes.
Catherine Sellebrow of the O.D.A. was calling first. It's not comparable to doing a private job, to do a public job. Every time we put these bids out, we get a certain amount we award, and the next thing you know, we're coming back with an up charge. This is a fifteen percent up charge. Joyce Construction's been in business a number of years, I don't understand how they can't estimate a job more accurately than this. I don't understand how any of them can estimate a job more accurately than they do. My husband and I build a number of houses, and we never had a contractor come to us and say, "We need a fifteen percent up charge." In any event, I, this is a separate contract. It's what is attached to the agenda, there's proposed additional work, there's three items, fifty-four thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars. I really think it should be put up to bid, maybe another company wants to tackle this, maybe they don't want to tackle pickleball courts, but this is public money, and I don't think you should just tack amended contract and tack fifty-four thousand dollars for the work. It's not five thousand, it's fifty-four thousand. And as I said, there may be companies out there who want to bid this time, and I just don't think, oh, this, you know, he's gonna be in town, or, you know, when you get away, it doesn't really matter, this is public money, this procedure, we have to do what's right. And again, I know I've said this before, is I don't know why these bids can't be put out for a mountain circuit. You bid it a month, and you're stoned, not that you bid a low amount and then come back with these up charges.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item seventeen is a motion to provide a decision on the waiver request submitted to the Super Policy Committee relative to the following property, Platt D Lot 210, 151 Ocean Road. I'm actually gonna look for a motion to continue this item to September 16th because the applicant indicated that it's not ready for tonight. Is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, motion approved, five to zero. Item number eighteen is a motion to authorize the town manager advertising the South County Style Vacation Guide.
Still move.
Second? Discussion. Go ahead.
I had a number of people tell me this year that the town was more crowded than ever. I had, took the opportunity to speak with the chamber this morning and ask what type of advertising they do, and found out that they do indeed advertise for the town. We have so many activities during the summer for the town and for our town visitors, free concerts, free moves at the beach, I don't see why we would want to advertise to have more people come. We are fortunate enough to have, I think, not only but two articles written by the New York Times recently talking about the hidden joy that we are here in Narragansett, and from the residents who spoke to me, there's enough traffic here already in the summer if I ask for more.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the council?
Sure. I wasn't aware of this item until I got on the agenda. I thought the policy for expenditures... I thought the policy for expenditures that we approved was anything under five thousand dollars was just, didn't have to be approved by the council? Is that not?
Under ten thousand is consent agenda. So we could have, this could have gone under consent agenda. We just didn't have that.
Okay. And is there an amount that doesn't have to be approved at all? That just isn't done by the head of the department?
Sean can answer that, but I usually think that, I think it's a little over, I think it gets, I want to say a little under a thousand, but... Just the threshold, consent agenda is ten thousand, once the department decides discretionary.
I think we, I would have been fine, but I thought that there's been a history of doing this. I think there's some points that Jill brought up, that it'd be good idea to have here for the council to discuss and vote if you want to continue to do this. It's something that we do every year.
We've done it for the last five years.
I don't have a problem with it. Feels to be like a little bit of micromanaging here for eighteen hundred dollars. Yeah, I don't know why it's even on here to be voted on. Seems like it should just be done by whoever's in charge of that advertising, so that's my opinion.
Deal.
Well, typically though, they, Sean, just so they were clear though, we would put agenda items on for this, whether they're consent or regular. Ten thousand's a consent number, but...
So this was on last year? Was this one on last year?
Was this on last year?
I don't know if it was last year, it was, I'm just going to believe it last year.
As a town manager, it's under twenty-five hundred.
Well, over a thousand.
Right, a thousand.
Should have been on the same agenda, but it's really...
Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You know what, I'm, motion fails two to two. I'm going to abstain on it. All right. Item number nineteen, a motion to receive a certification by the Narragansett Board of Campuses of a voter initiative petition to amend the town charter to create a recall provision.
Move that motion.
Second?
All right, discussion. So this process began several months ago. When Winters Hames put in a recall provision for a recall, that would be on the two thousand and twenty ballot that the member, community would vote on in the two thousand and twenty general election to add a recall provision to our town charter. And so then he had to, we had to see if that question was a valid legal question, the council said it was. And then the applicant had to collect signatures, and those signatures were collected. I'm going to then hand it off to the town clerk and the town manager just to walk us through after the signatures were collected and what the Board of Campuses did to update us on what the next steps are and what we're doing here.
Okay, so the petitions were duly signed, notarized, and submitted to the town clerk between May fourteenth and July eleventh, and the deadline to submission was July sixteenth. The Board of Campuses verified the signatures contained on the petitions against the Narragansett registered voter list. According to the following to the board during the meeting call for that purpose on August ninth. The number of signatures required was eight hundred and fifty-six. The number of signatures tallied was one thousand three hundred and forty-four. The number of signatures declared valid was one thousand two hundred and twenty. And the number of signatures declared invalid were one hundred and twenty-four. That was based on signatures that were disqualified because they were duplicates, completely illegible, received past the deadline, or those of individuals who were not qualified electors of the town Narragansett. So then the next process, the next part of the process is when the town council receives the petition, according to the town charter, the duly served by petition with the accompanying proposed legislation shall be placed on the council agenda for a final vote within forty-five days of the council's receipt of said petition. If within this time the council fails to act upon said legislation, rejects said legislation, or enacts said legislation in a materially different form, the legislation as originally proposed shall be submitted to the electorate of the town Narragansett on referendum ballot at the next regularly scheduled general election.
All right, so everyone can see the language of the proposed charter amendment, which would include a recall provision for us. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a question. Can we find out somehow what this is going to cost the taxpayers of this town if this moves forward? Because I'm sure that's a concern, that something out there, and then you're going to recall people, and then you're going to have a special election. I think the taxpayers... If there's a cost behind this, I think that we should know what the cost is. That's all. There is a, I don't have a problem.
What we can do is identify what the cost of, we can identify what the cost of a special election would be and have that information. It would be if a recall took place. So the way the recall would work is that after the election, there'd be a timeframe in which people couldn't submit signatures, and there'd be a certain percentage, and the number here is twenty-five percent, of people who had voted in the last election, and then there would be a special election to recall that individual from office. And so that's how this, that's how the recall works. Some states have it, some cities and towns have it, others don't. So it's, but we would have to amend our charter to include it. And so there's benefits and drawbacks to it, but the initiative process allows it to be put on the two thousand and twenty ballot. So that's kind of where we are with it.
I'm on board with it. I'm trying to get out of this racket.
So just to be clear on this, what we're really voting on is, Mark has already advised us that it is legal, what they're asked to do is legal in the town. And Terry has just advised us that the Board of Campuses is saying that the signatures are the correct number. So we are not voting to whether we're not, we believe that this item should be passed in two thousand and twenty. We are just voting on the validity of the motion and the fact that everything was in order, correct?
Certification.
We're receiving the certification. Exactly. So just so everyone knows, procedures going on, we're receiving the certification that came from the Board of Campuses of the thirteen, one thousand three hundred and forty-four signatures. So in terms of the merits of it, people have different opinions. I think in a two-year election cycle, that is my personal view, I would not vote for a recall provision because it's appropriate maybe in a four-year election cycle. But in a two-year election cycle, you could have constant elections. So I think that that's, that would be something that we would be in constant campaign mode, and I think that would not be healthy in a two-year cycle. But again, this is not about whether we're for or against it, this is, again, receiving the certification. So any other comments or questions?
I think the candidate would be pretty bad for them to go out and get signatures of twenty-five percent of the populace that voted, and it would be a process that, believe me, somebody would have to be a pretty dismal candidate to go through that door of recall.
Is there anyone else? Yes.
Catherine Salvador, forty-eight, was called first. We have a recall provision in our state law, it's very specific. This recall petition has no parameters whatsoever. I don't know how it could possibly be that. It's, there's nothing in it at all. It doesn't say, I think, somebody commits a crime, somebody malfeasance of office, nothing. There's no parameters at all. How could this possibly be a valid petition?
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved five to zero. Item, item number twenty is a motion to approve the sale of the old Belmont IGA Building to PKB FLC for the price of two million dollars, seventy thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars, and to authorize the town in Narragansett to enter into a purchase and sales agreement for the sale of this real estate.
Still moved?
Second?
Discussion? So this is a follow-up to our, the item that we've had last month, I wanted to, where we signed a purchase and sales agreement with Pier Liquors. And this is, as people know, this is a thing that we've been talking about in the town for a long time. The bottom line is that we spent two point eight million dollars from our general fund, we have camp fees that we have to pay to Gilbain year after year, we have a parking situation with the parking spots that has now become an issue. We're not sure who should be able to park in those spots or not. So in order for us to move forward, in order for us to recoup that two point eight million dollars, and for us to, for the betterment of the town, I put this motion on. Those, I've shared those reasons with the public in terms of my concerns about the camp fees, the overall price, and the parking spot situation, and the proximity to the liquor store, all things that are, I thought were flaws in the original agreement. And so for now, what I want to do is just for the terms of the deal itself, I'm just going to turn over the town solicitor so he can share those terms with everybody here.
The terms of the proposed purchase of the Belmont Market space is for a total purchase price of two million seventy thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. Fifty thousand to be paid as a deposit within five days of execution of the purchase and sales agreement. At closing, an additional seven hundred thousand dollars. And then the balance of the purchase price would be in the form of a note payable to the town, accruing interest with interest payments only for up to three years, at an interest rate in year one equal to five percent of the then outstanding principal balance. Years two and three, interest would accrue and be payable at a rate of five point seven five percent per annum. The loan would be secured by a mortgage in the real property, so the town would have the first position. And Carlos Mota, who's the member of the FLC, would personally guarantee the note. That's essentially subject to due diligence and some other contingencies that were consistent with what was in the Pier Liquor Store transaction. That's the basis of it.
Thank you. And so the terms of the deals are hanging up in the council.
I got a couple of questions. Mark, is there a proof of funds? He's putting down seven hundred thousand. Is there a proof of funds that he has seven hundred thousand? That's standing in them.
No, there's, we don't have a proof of funds.
You don't have a proof of funds? Is there a business plan submitted with his package to, you know, kind of give the folks out there what the hell's going on here?
I don't know, Patrick, but you and the other council members each met with Carlos individually, so if these were...
Well, I was hoping to get some kind of, you know, demonstration, is a buyer here?
So that's my fault.
Is a buyer here?
So that's my fault. The concept that's been put forward is, is a, in the middle of this area, there would be a kitchen area, and then around it, it would be an eatery style concept, and he would, he is, that he would go to different areas, different businesses in town if they wanted to be part of that, and then there would be a seating area around that. So essentially, it's an eatery style, almost like a food court, that we felt, that I felt could supplement what we have in the summertime with the food trucks on Monday and Wednesday nights. I think it's the type of thing that a lot of people in town, that a lot of people in town have spoken about, that they wanted to revitalize the pier over several years, they want to revitalize the pier. And this is something that I think was, when I sat down with him, sounded like a good idea. And I, so I do apologize for not expanding on that and sharing that part of the deal, because I think that, as I said, is something that could really vital, revitalize the pier, supplement what we have in the summertime. In the wintertime, we know that things slow down. I'm not sure if it will be as effective, that's why we are taking the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar deposit. If it doesn't work, it's something that will have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the town, and that the property would come back to the town. So that's the protect, that's the mechanism we put in to protect ourselves. So that's kind of the details of what happened. In terms of, as Mark said, there was, this was described in the preliminary offers that were made to us from the, from the owner of this company, and his name is Carlos Mota, and he, and what we said is, I said to all the council members, why don't you go and meet, why don't we, if you want to meet with him, so each of the council members, I know they all at different times met with him, and I actually was the last of the council members to meet with him. So I felt like, because I had concerns that I, as I've expressed before, that I felt it was important for us to secure Pier Liquor's futures first, I shared that with Mr. Mota, and so that's why we are where we are. So I apologize that I didn't share those details earlier, but go ahead, Patrick.
Okay, well, we, we spent four to six months on student parking, two public hearings, and, and just exhaustive discussion on student parking. So we're going into a contract, not one public hearing, no business plan, no proof of funds. And then a promissory note based on what, what, is there any collateral with that promissory note? Or is there, is it?
Yeah, it's the property.
I understand that, but the seven hundred thousand, is there any? Nothing, all right. We've been, now, the other question I have, can the property be assigned? I see in the contract that says it cannot be assigned. Is that correct? Mark?
Can the property be assigned? What?
Reassign. Can he take this contract and reassign it to another developer?
Uh, no.
All right, once, once the sale is through, the inspections are over, and he owns the building, and he's paying the note, and he's paying it on time, and he's a model tenant, owner, mortgagee. Can he reassign it?
We would not release our lien. So I guess as a property owner, he could sell the property, but we would not release our lien, so I don't know how feasible that would be.
Well, what kind of legal ramifications that may hold for us in the future? And this guy wants to sell because he's not making it, or he wants a zoning change?
Like, like any other real estate transaction, they'd have to pay the lien off.
Right. But the problem is, if he pays the lien off, can he go ahead and sell the, sell the project?
Yes.
Okay, see, so what we're doing is, it took us fifty years to get a chunk of the pier back, all right? You know, which I was very ecstatic, you know, and, you know, I, I was under the guise of the library there, change the dynamics of the pier, put something in the old library there, lease it out. I mean, we got at least one councilman who doesn't want to lease, but he has no problem being in the mortgage business. So that doesn't make it. I mean, I, I think it's an unknown. We're gonna, I mean, listen, I got nothing against Carlos, in fact, full disclosure, I tried to sell him other buildings. I showed him three other buildings in town to try to, you know, steer him away from this building, so. And he's a nice guy, and he seemed like a stand-up guy. So I got nothing personal against him, this is business. This is like Godfather Two, it's business, it's about business, not personal. Does the buyer have the ability to open up a liquor store, to sell wine, to sell liquor, in that concept?
That would be subject to zoning and the town council approval.
I don't know, it's commercial, it would be...
It would be meaning adding another liquor license, which we don't have, so the answer's no.
I mean, if it's a restaurant, it would have to go through the same application and referral process than any other restaurant.
But isn't that kind of in conflict with the liquor store? I'm just trying to clarify what I'm doing. There's a lot of questions people are asking me, and I'm just trying to get through.
Patrick, when I met with, when I met with Mr. Mota, I was with Mark and Rick, and one of the things that he was expressing constantly was concept he's currently working on in Connecticut. The key component of having the food court, she calls it a European marketplace, was to have a liquor store... was to have a liquor store next to it. And he was very excited about the fact that Pier Liquor was here. As a matter of fact, during the entire process, he really wanted to be able to work with Pier Liquor, and he sees that Pier Liquor's success will be the success of the European marketplace. And it should be noted, too, it's not a food court. You know, he got signs up saying "food court." What his intent is to do is to really, to help out, to be entrepreneurial. He lives here in town. He has a home here in town. He's been here for 12 years, or 13 years. He's working on a project in Connecticut that's going to be opening up this fall that is much larger than this. What his intent is, is he's traveled the world, as he explained to Rick myself and Mark, in, in, in really researching these marketplaces. He loves this town and wants to help this town not only have people come here for the beach, but what about the shoulder seasons? To have people make Narragansett a destination for other opportunities, other times. His intent is to create potentially up to 20 professional kitchens out of his dime. He's going to put about $2 million into, into the building and then operate it. Rich Fugus here, one of the commercial fishermen present, and I just was discussing him tonight that, that potentially the Port of Galilee, the fishermen, the small businesses, the small family fishermen could go to this, this particular marketplace and sell fish, just like you see at, at the Fulton Fish Market. So it's an economic opportunity for the town to bring people here on the shoulder seasons. It's not a food court. It's certainly not going to be taking business away from the other businesses in the town. To address your point about the food trucks, one point that Carlos brought up when we met with him is that he would ask the food trucks to come and park in the lot during the time that the market is open. He intends to have advertising. He intends to bring people here. He intends to make it a focal point of our community. And before we tell people that it's going to fail, let's have this guy give a chance. That boat has been vacant for how long?
Well, we had a plan.
Well, unfortunately, Patrick, there was something that happened in two days of the 18th call and election, and you have new people, new plans.
So I guess this is?
His desire is to make it, to have it be complimentary. And I did ask about places complimentary to, to what we have in the pier. And I did ask him also, I said, "Is there flexibility here?" When, you know, when I met with him, and I mentioned this when we were in, we were all meeting afterwards about it, that he would be open to some retail concepts there, if that was something that there was a demand for. Because I mentioned things like Zero Wamp and Close, and things in similar stores. So there is flexibility as well, but I just want to mention that he desires to have it be very complimentary to what the business is, and not to take business away from them.
Well, I don't, I don't know how you can place 20 smaller restaurants in a sea of restaurants that have 60, 70 days to get it right.
See, not restaurants, marketplace. So Mark, so there might be somebody selling bread, there might be somebody selling fish, selling meat, selling vegetables. We're not talking about 20 different restaurants, but he has to set up in a way. And the, excuse me, folks, can you?
Excuse me. Excuse me.
The way that he set it up in Connecticut is really intriguing. He wants to be able to have a few very, very solid people that will be there year-round, and also have a portion that will be on a rotating basis, so that people will, will say, "Hey, what's going on this weekend? Let's go down to the marketplace and see what's, what's happening down there." It's a unique concept. It's happening all over the country. Think about the Chelsea Market in New York. This is a concept that is really unique and is going to draw people to our town.
But we don't have the demographics, Jill.
Sure we do.
No, we don't. I live in Connecticut, and every game?
You guys want it at time.
It's a big stretch.
No, I agree, I agree, but we do have the demographics. You think about the college kids. I mean, they, they, they go to, and they, they really enjoy the farmer's markets. They enjoy making sure that they have really good quality food. And we also have fruit.
50% of the demographics of that building are fish. And fish don't eat chicken cordon bleu on a stick.
Okay.
There were long lines at the food trucks many times, and I'm sure?
Yeah, and I think those lines are going to shorten if you open up 20 other restaurants.
It's not restaurants, Patrick. It's just not restaurants. I know you want to make it to a flea market or to a food court, because that really serves your purpose. Of raveling out everybody.
I want to make it into a library. I don't want to make it a house. Talking about student parking, okay, here, here we're doing a major economic development plan. There's no business plan. There's no proof of funds. And it can possibly be reassigned to yet another entity that we have no control over. I mean, I just, I just don't get it. I don't see any upside here. I mean, the only good news is that we'll hold the paper. I'm glad we'll hold the paper. Because if the guy does go south, we'll be in first position. That's one thing I knew. I wish it was a five minute, so.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, sure.
All right, I got one more question. How's the Chamber of Commerce feel about this? Hey, is the Chamber of Commerce on board for this conference?
This is, this is, this is our council discussion.
Maybe she can get up, maybe she can get up and speak.
We'll go, then we'll go to the public. If she wants to speak, she'll speak.
All right. So I guess everyone's trying to describe what Mr. Muta has in store for us. I'm curious if the buyer is here tonight? So the buyer's not here?
Why would he?
Can you blame him?
No, I mean, I would be here.
Yeah, well, let's just be, let's be.
One at a time.
Let's be really honest. Social media this past week has been railing on the guy.
This is not a situation where we're all saying, "We have a building in town that we want to, let's figure it out together," right? There's 95% of the town.
Library!
If you can't keep, if you can't keep order, you're going to be removed. I'd like the policeman in the back to be aware of that, and I want our town sergeant to be alert to the people who can't control themselves. Especially in social media, where we were told, "We'll show them what an angry mob looks like on, on Tuesday night."
I think the town sergeant left. I think he resigned with everybody else.
So go ahead.
Thanks. My point is that he could be here tonight to tell everybody what he has planned, to convince everybody about what a great idea it is, how it's not going to hurt their business. But he's not. He's not here. He wants to be part of this community. He's not here. So, I'll do him a favor. Hopefully he's watching on TV. Let's take a pulse of the room tonight. How many people in this room are for this sale? And how many people are against it?
How do we make our point in Connecticut? I know it's fun, guys, to play to the crowd, but I think it's also obvious that the, the crowd does not, the angry mob does not want the change, right? They don't want the change. So why, they're not persuasable. People aren't speaking to each other anymore in the town. So why on earth are they going to, he's not going to persuade anybody? So it's foolish to criticize them.
And I guess your opinion doesn't count. That's, that's what we're talking about, right?
No, that's not what I said, Jessica.
Yes, yes.
This is, go ahead. Jessica, go do your thing. Go ahead.
So I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's the first day of school for families in town. Difficult to come out on a night like this at 7:30 at night after you've had your first day. The kids are back home, but we still have a full, a full chamber of theater. Supporting something they believe in. It would be nice if the town council respected the wishes and your votes, rather than make up childish, childish excuses like a silent majority that never seems to come with a show. So I know many of, many of you have read the motion and the purchase and sales. You have a lot of the same questions that I have. So why don't we ask the questions right now? As you know, the PNS includes a reference of tabonary financing for the purchase of the Belmont Building to PKV LLC, which is Carlos Muta. So my question to Mark Davis is, when is the last time that the town, this town, has financed the purchase of real estate for a private business?
I can only speak during my tenure, and it hasn't happened during my tenure.
Okay. Can you, can you give me an example of any town or city of Rhode Island doing this?
I can't give you specifics, but towns and cities issued tax abatements, grants. In fact, Hartford gave Carlos between $300,000 and $900,000 for his market and
We've got to have cash.
As a, as a grant, not a loan.
A grant, right? So, but not financing? I know about subsidies and incentives and that sort of thing, but financing?
Yeah, I don't. I don't. I can't speak for other towns.
You can't, okay.
I do finance sewer projects for town folks.
That's possible.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Are you aware of other states in the United States that actually have laws that forbid financing of private business?
No, I'm only concerned with Narragansett, and Narragansett does not have law prohibiting destruction.
There's a reference in the motion summary submitted by Matt that says, "What happens if the buyer defaults on the loan?" So do we have a definition of what constitutes a default in this case?
No, the default will be set forth in the note, and there will also be defaults in the mortgage document, those ads, and the promissory note. So the promissory, well, the promissory note in the mortgage should not have been drafted. But if you read the language that's in the purchase and sales agreement, those documents need to be satisfactory to the town. Not mutually satisfactory, but satisfactory to the town. So we will be drafting those in a, in a very broad fashion to obviously provide us with the opportunity to call defaults whenever appropriate.
So that would be the attorneys, the solicitors for, so I guess you and Carlos's legal counsel?
I'll be working on that document with, as well as condo documents, with Assistant Solicitor Steve Marsala, and we'll be negotiating that with Carlos's counsel.
And that would come back to the council for a public vote?
You will have to approve the, you'll have to approve those documents.
And what would that be, an executive session or a public vote?
Those would probably be a public vote.
Mark, in a standard promissory note, isn't it if the the applicant there is three months behind, then that's generally a default?
Right.
Most cases?
Generally, it's, it's if they're past due 10 days on a payment, and then after, it's either five or 10 days. Typically, in a commercial deal, five or 10 days, they miss a payment. And they're late, they'll request a notice. We'll probably give them 10 days written notice to cure if they don't cure. But the reality, if you know you're in the business, is if we start foreclosure proceedings because somebody's 15 days in arrears, it's probably not prudent to do so. So as a practice, you know, somebody needs to get to that 60, 90 days of deficiencies before you start taking?
During that foreclosure process, he could, he could really, he could sell his interest in that property to another entity, right?
If they assume the note. But I think we could stop that by declaring it a default at that point and accelerating. So I think you wouldn't do it as a practical, as a practical matter in a routine situation. If you didn't, if you saw something occurring that you didn't like, you could certainly, if they're in technical default, you could accelerate it.
I think, I think the promissory note should state that it cannot be reassigned, and it defaults to the town no matter what happens. Because, you know, that's the whole idea of holding the note.
We, absolutely. I mean, you can't, we wouldn't allow him to transfer ownership of the property without paying our note default. We just wouldn't allow that.
Well, we shouldn't let him assign it, whether he pays it or not.
Well, I mean, he's, he's going to own it and fee simple, so I don't think you can violate his property, his property rights, you can say that you can't.
Well, I think we should have a first right of refusal.
So camp fees. One of the main reasons, or one of the reasons that the majority of the council has been against moving the library to the Belmont Building are the camp fees. $38,000 a year is what was negotiated with Gilbane and the town for those common area maintenance fees. In section 2.4 of the PNS, we cover the camp fees. It states that the parties agree to negotiate and document a maintenance and easement agreement before the expiration of the inspection period. So, does that mean that by default in this PNS, that the buyer would not be assuming the current camp fees?
No, that's inaccurate. We make reference to the maintenance and easement agreement with Gilbane, and we make it clear, I think it's in the first or second paragraph of that section, that they take it subject to that document. We're referring to an additional easement agreement, because the, this is going to be a condo now, and you're going to have condo units, owners one and two, that are going to need access to utility, utilities, because they're all located in the market. HVACs that are located on the Belmont roof. So there's, there needs to be an easement and maintenance agreement within the condo.
So it's not related to the camp fees? It's not an easement?
They're assuming, they're going to be assuming their pro rata share of the camp charges.
Okay. So I guess related to, going back to the camp fees, we did just receive a letter from legal counsel for GP Pier Realty, which is, is that the name of it? GP?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is GP Pier Retail, which is Gilbane Properties. It's a pretty striking letter, I'd say. I'm just going to read a portion of that, because it does relate to the camp fees. So it says, "After negotiations in 2017 and 2018, my client agreed to sell the above referenced property to be used as a library at a discounted rate, discounted price, as well as a discounted maintenance agreement in view of the public benefit to be conferred by a new library." "As a result of that sale, my client reserved an exclusive right to use and maintain parking spaces, and the parties entered into a maintenance and easement agreement which envisioned the construction of the library as noted by the positive outcome of the bond referendum and the purchase and sales agreement. You will note in the maintenance and easement agreement that my client agreed to cap the operating expenses for what was known in the agreement as the library parcel." And then they go on to say, "The maintenance and easement agreement entered into between the town and my client will be null and void as a result of the representations made by the town as set forth in that agreement will no longer be true." Would you disagree with this statement?
I would, I would say I disagree would be an understatement. I negotiated that purchase and sales agreement with the seller's counsel, which is not the author of this document. In fact, I negotiated with Jack McGreen. And there was never any mention of restricting the building to a library. In fact, the seller is a multi-billion dollar real estate company, and they know that if you want restrictions, you put them in the deed. You put them in the document. You put them in the maintenance and easement agreement. And Jack McGreen, if he was here, we could call him up and ask him if that was ever discussed. It was not discussed. So yes, I do disagree with it. I, I had been forwarded this about 30 minutes before we came, and I disagree with about everything in here. You know, the fact that these business uses are going to have the diminution of value. Well, Pier Liquor's has been their tenant, so how that reduces their value is beyond me. Belmont Market was a full-blown market, and that was the tenant of the seller's. So this, this law firm, although quite talented, was not the party that negotiated on behalf of the seller, and is, in my opinion, not accurately reflecting the negotiations that I personally participated in.
Okay, thank you. So they do end the letter by saying, "Should the town choose to go forward with the sale and authorize these uses as proposed at the subject property, my client will pursue any and all relief necessary to protect its interests, including the value of its adjacent properties." So, you know, as we know, the original PNS does refer to the Belmont portion as the So, you know, as we know, the original PNS does refer to the Belmont portion as the library unit. And any court case is obviously going to subpoena, you know, communications and emails and different discussions. So, I guess we'll see what happens there. But it does seem like this may be a long process.
They're certainly entitled to go, you know, seek their legal remedies. I personally think they lack standing, so, like I said, I don't agree with anything that's in this letter. We'd be happy to, you know, answer any legal complaints in the file.
All right. The PNS includes requirements that Carlos Muta must deliver to the town. So, one is a personal guarantee of what, that he's going to pay it back? Is that the guarantee?
Yes, if you, if you note Carlos Muta is not the purchaser, and LLC is the purchaser, so Carlos would be guaranteeing the obligations of the LLC.
Okay. And then we have a good standing certificate from the Rhode Island Secretary of State and the Rhode Island Division of Taxation. So, are you aware of any business entities in Rhode Island that are owned by Mr. Muta?
No.
All right. And he doesn't, does he generate any business income or revenue?
I don't know. At the time the PNS was fully negotiated, it was going to be Carlos Muta hadn't decided where he was going to form an entity. But if you, I see where you're going with it. There is also another provision in that section that says that they will also provide any other documents reasonably requested. So, if it turns out that the LLC is a Connecticut LLC, or Delaware LLC, or corporation, we will obviously require the relevant documentation that is typical for a deal of this size. If it's a new LLC, the good standing certificates actually don't mean a lot because they haven't been in business and they haven't had to file annual reports. So, they have to be properly formed, but beyond that, there's not a lot of significance to those particular documents.
So, with him conducting business in Connecticut for multiple decades, it would probably make sense to require a good standing from Connecticut, right?
Well, if it's, if the entity that we're doing business with is not in Connecticut, it really has no bearing.
So, we would just ignore his previous history as a businessman?
Well, you can look at his previous history, which I've done, and I've spoken to Carlos. And he had, he had an LLC, as far as I can tell, and as far as he's disclosed to me, an LLC in 2015 in Hartford that he put into Chapter 11.
Wow.
But, but what's notable about that is, that was in 2015. In 2018, the governor of Hartford, the mayor of Hartford, and all local politicians of Hartford gave him money and celebrated the opening of his site as late as October of 2018. So, you know, he explained why that LLC went into bankruptcy. Look, businesses set up LLCs to protect, protect themselves individually. You would like to believe that Hartford wouldn't be giving him $300,000 to $800,000 or $900,000, given the fact that he filed bankruptcy in that, in that city three years earlier. So, from what I can tell, he has an incredibly good reputation in, in the areas in which he's done business. Has he had a failure or two? Of course he has. But I think the overall materials that you read about Carlos are very positive.
Do you know the amount of debt that was included in that bankruptcy?
I just, from what I've read, and I don't really recall it.
I think it's $2.5 million. So, let's go a little bit deeper into the terms of the town financing. I just want to make sure I understand these terms and calculating it correctly. So, the buyer is going to bring 250, or sorry, $750,000 down at the initial, at the purchase. And then that would leave a balance of $1,321,45. To be financed by the town over three years.
That's, it's subject to some minor adjustments, but that, those numbers are accurate.
All right, so the APR, so that interest rate that we're referring to is annual, right? Annual percentage rate? Yep. First year would be 5%.
Correct.
And then the next two years would be 5.75%. So, that'd be year two and three.
If it goes three years, that's correct.
Right. And then we talk about monthly payments, and we've talked about defaulting, and how many months would constitute a default. So, the monthly payments, which are, they would be interest only?
That's correct.
All right. So, are you able to tell me what that would make his monthly payment for the first year?
Well, the first year annually is $66,000, so it's going to be somewhere around, I don't know, 50, 5300.
So, he's going to pay $5,500 a month to open this up 19,000 square feet in the pier?
That's what he's going to pay on the financing. Interest only would be $66,000 for the first year, which comes out to $5,500 a month, plus his camp charges, plus property taxes, and then plus the buildup. Because he's not making any money during, during the years of one, one year.
Yeah, so he has, yeah. It's interesting because I know a lot of businesses in the pier area that don't make any money in the winter at all because they keep their staff on and they stay open so they can serve the people all year. But they lose money in the winter because their rents are like $4,000 a month for like 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, and I know that because my wife opened a business in the pier, so we're, I know that as well as anyone.
Yeah. So, this buyer would be spending $205,000 over three years in his monthly payments to be in this building?
I came up with about $218,000.
Okay, all right. So, that plus the $750 down, you can add in some additional fees, we're around $1 million for three years. So, if he wanted to sell that building for $2.5 million, $3 million, he could do that. We know that, he could do that. So, he could just never open a market and just sell the building. And he only has to pay $5,000 a month to do that.
He could.
That, that payment's interest only, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it doesn't knock down any principal?
You'd have to pay the principal.
Right, you have to pay the principal. It's interest only.
Yeah, I get it.
So, he's taking that money and just throwing it into the tubes. The longer he waits to pay it, the more money he throws into the trash can. It's like rent.
Yes, unless he sells it.
Well, we have the control. You know what? We have the control, so we'll control all the deal.
Mark just said he could sell it. We don't have control.
We have control of the building until he pays us the final payment.
He could reassign it.
All right, so.
That's how the deal's structured.
Like I, well, as I stated earlier, there are businesses, multiple restaurants on Moon Street and in the direct pier area that spend $3,000 to $5,000 a month to run their business. This town council is spitting in their face tonight. That man stated in his motion summary that the new businesses, the new business would not compete with local businesses. They would complement but not compete. Is there any stipulation in the agreement that no men there in this building will be allowed to sell coffee so that they don't compete with the food beans?
I think the motion summaries, as you said, they're opinions, that's what he shared. But that's, you're not voting on whether he's competitive, right? So, that's.
We're voting on the concept.
You're, you're voting on the motion.
So, no sandwiches, right?
You're voting on the, you're voting on the motion.
Is there a guarantee of there's no sandwiches?
You're voting on the motion.
Matt, excuse me.
That's what you're voting on. I know, I know this is a difficult concept, we've talked about this for nine months.
You call it a concept. You call it a economic development. The last thing we need is another restaurant.
Okay, that's, and that's the whole, that's the discussion.
Great, thank you. So, again, there's not going to be any pizza here. That's a guarantee, right? No pizza at this, at this market. No burgers, we're not going to compete with Crazy Burger.
Again, Jesse, you're not, it's a motion and a summary. The summary is what is the, is the opinion supporting it. But you're not, you're not, you're saying on these like provisions. It's very misleading to the public.
I'm asking if there's a provision. You said it's not going to compete. I'm asking if there's a...
There's no, there's no non-competition provisions, no.
All right, thank you.
I will say though, during the discussion, we had Carlos actually brought it up to us, that he would not have anybody competing. He specifically mentioned Nana's Gelato. So, he said he would not bring in anybody that would sell ice cream because he would not want to compete with Nana's.
All right, well, if you see it or not, you can go ahead.
Did you get that writing? Is this in writing somewhere? You better get something in writing. We've got to protect the local pier businesses. We've got to protect the food trucks. I mean, if they're going to have 20 people, 25 businesses crammed in there, it's like putting a food truck in there.
He wants the food trucks too. Patrick, I already mentioned that.
Well, there we go, there's more parking. That's another thing with the...
All right, so, no Thai food because we have a Thai place right next door. No Mexican food because we have Calabaros right up the street, right? Has, has there been an economic impact study done? Seems like kind of an obvious thing to do. Has there been a workshop done with local businesses to see what they would like?
Was there an economic impact statement done of the library moving from one corner of the pier to the other? Because the library is an economic development engine. That's, that's what we've been told repeatedly, that it's going to revitalize the pier.
Plenty of studies on the impact that libraries have on towns and cities. You can Google it. You'll get 10 results right there.
I do more deep research than Google.
Matt, Matt. We got one library. We don't have 20 other libraries. You close proximity would compete.
East Dale, Willoughby Library, they're very close by.
No workshop with local businesses. We've had three town council members sitting, sitting in executive session playing Kingmaker in Narragansett. If this food court happens, it will absolutely take business away from our existing longtime local businesses. These are the local business owners that have spent years in the community and committed money, their time, and their lives to these businesses and to this town. I cannot believe a town council who is supposed to represent the people of this town would undercut our local business by giving an out-of-state competitor an unfair advantage. We've all watched over years as residential property in town has been scooped up by out-of-state buyers and investors. It's a trend that hasn't slowed down, but one that has forced people who grew up here to buy their first homes elsewhere. As the town we all know and love seems to be slipping away and becoming a playground for New York and Connecticut money, the one thing that has remained local has been the small businesses. The residents who live here year-round appreciate the businesses owned by those who live here with us. But what we've seen with the change in residential demographics, we're about to see in the commercial side as well, by three council members who won't blink an eye as they sell out every single pier area business. It's over. The last chapter in the sell-off of our town to outside interests starts tonight. I'm going to say this to the town council majority and to Mr. Carlos Muta. Do not take this building from us. Those who voted in 2016 approved the funds for a new library. Finally, something for us, not for the tourists. For those of us who pay a higher mortgage than we can afford to live in the town. For those business owners who have struggled through the winters, who keep their staff on and take a loss so that they can serve the community year-round. A library helps to keep this town and community. This project has been in the works and in the making for 10 years. Do not come to this town where you spend your vacations and steal this from us. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the council? All right, so, we're going to go to the public. We'll start with Quinn.
Good evening, my name is Michael Kelly. I'm an attorney. My office is at 128 Orange Street. I represent GP Pier Retail LLC, who as you know, sold the building to the town recently. My client was approached by the town to sell the former Belmont building to it for a library. It was induced to sell it to the town due to the fact it was to be a library serving town residents. And my client also was induced as a result of this building, representations by the town, this building would be used for a library to provide the town with a discounted maintenance agreement. And the maintenance agreement that was granted to the town is about $20,000 less per year than it would have been for another party, or what it was actually for the Belmont Market. The town residents then issued, approved the bond issue to finance this library. And now it appears that what we have is a bait and switch. The town wants to sell the property, allow an intense commercial use, and that is one of the reasons that we're here tonight. We believe that this sale would violate the intent of the sale by my client to the town, and certainly would violate the intent and the discount that was given to the town in the maintenance agreement. Now, the proposed use is obviously much more intense. Traffic oriented and parking requirements are much higher than a library. And the sale of the Pier Liquors building with the second floor will compound the traffic and parking problem. It will create a very serious parking and circulation problem on the entire property, particularly with the parking. The parking on the site is allocated amongst businesses and owners. The Belmont Market had a total of 30 parking spaces. And the proposed use, whether it's a restaurant or a food court, whatever you want to call it, there's a much more intense use and as compared to a library use. According to your zoning code, a restaurant requires one parking space for every three seats. I would point out that the Trio Restaurant, which is half the size of this proposed use, has a total of 72 parking spaces, more than double what this proposed use would have. And the proposed use is twice as big as the Trio Restaurant. Pier Liquors only has 12 parking spaces without the use of the second floor. And I understand that the Pier Liquors is proposing to use the second floor for wine tasting events, et cetera. Again, increasing traffic and the parking problem. My client's very concerned that this parking and circulation problem is going to cause congestion. It's going to cause problems with the other businesses taking their parking, and it will diminish the value of GP's property on the site.
Thank you. We received your notice of objection, so we have that for the record.
I have just one more minute, if I may, Mr. President.
So, we're at, we're over the three minutes, I think. So, thank you. I think it's a... I think it's, thank you.
One more point, Mr. President. The, I think the financing, you may want to take a look at your charter, because I think it might violate provisions of the charter in regard to the town indebtedness. You spoke about payments, and if this gentleman has a problem like he did in Connecticut and goes into a Chapter 11, it'd be a long time before the town receives any payments. And the note itself could be restructured and extended for many, many years. The bottom line is that foreclosing on a piece of property, commercial property, is not that easy.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. We received your objection. Thank you. Thank you very much.
What you know, my client... What you know, my client intends to take whatever legal action is necessary to prevent it.
Thank you. Thank you. There was no deed restriction in the agreement, in the deed that when the property was transferred to the town. So, that is what would typically be done in such deals, a deed restriction would be that that is absent from this particular agreement.
They're gonna judge, and then they have to decide that one. I'm worried about cost.
There's not a deed restriction, Patrick. There's no deed restriction. There's no deed restriction. There can't be. There is no deed restriction. This is an important point, all right? This is a very important point. There is no deed restriction, and many of you have been told, many of you have been told, no, I haven't, many of you have been told back in January. This is an important fact, because the facts are important, okay? The Friends of the Library sent out in January, to get people to go to the candlelight walk, it said, it was said by the Friends of the Library, in the original personal sales agreement, Gilway wanted the Belmont Building to be used as a library. The town took that out of the agreement. That is a lie. It was never in any agreement, it was in never an offer letter, there was no deed restriction. It is 100% false, and many of you have been parroting that fact, that lie, because that is not a factual statement. And I went back, because I doubted, I actually doubted the situation, and so I went back and looked it over. No, it's important to listen to the facts, okay? This is very important, and that is a fact. Again, there was no deed restriction, no requirement that the library need.
Go ahead. One minute, please, one minute, please, before we get going tonight. First of all, thanks for coming up with my last council meeting. We've mentioned this multiple times, please refrain from yelling out your names. Everyone's gonna have two minutes now, and then during the form speaker piece for three minutes of voting. So please, you know, be respectful, and hold yourself up to the Narragansett standard, so we can voice our opinions and do what we can.
He just said not to shout out. No, at some point it's gotta be decorum. You need to condense. You need to condense.
I have the floor. Are we working on my man?
Go ahead.
Good. First of all, I like the fact that you're dealing, I like the fact that you're dealing. Oh, Woodhills 31th Avenue, Narragansett, Rhode Island, 02882. Okay, to begin with, I like your statement that you want facts. In April of 2014, I stood here before you requesting finances for sewers on Woodhills Avenue and South Trail. A town engineer, Jeff Cesarine, sent a letter to the council, explaining that the town, under Section 6-2-8 of the Town Charter, that the town could only borrow 1.5% of the town budget to finance projects like this. At that time, it was $795,000, we would have eaten up 91% of it. He recommended against it, and you voted against it. You're the only one left that remembered that, Matthew. Fast forward to today, 1.5% of the budget is $900,000, is the maximum amount that you can loan without going to the town for a referendum. Your loaning is far in excess of that allowed on Section 6-2-8 of the Charter. Now, this is the debt without referendum section from the Code of Ordinances. No audit indebtedness may be incurred pledging the credit of the town in excess of 1.5% of the current adopted budget in any fiscal year, unless submitted to the vote of qualified electors at either a general or special election, and then approved by the majority of the votes cast at said election. If you're saying this is not a loan, then the IRS disagrees with you. Generally accepted accounting principles. Generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP, are the most commonly used set of accounting rules in the United States. GAAP is an improved-based system, which means that transactions are recorded as they occur. Revenue is recorded then when it is earned, and expenses are recorded when they are incurred. Cash does not need to exchange hand to required entry. From Tony Carrero, who was a real estate, national real estate expert, one tactic used by sellers to increase the available perspective buyer pools to offer seller carried financing. Real estate professionals think sellers offering to finance qualified buyers are basically just carrying those buyers mortgages. In truth, seller financing is nothing more than the seller acting as a true mortgage lender. Now, I've talked to several people, I've got nine seconds left. Well, we'll just go right down here. If you go through with this deal tonight, then you're violating and willfully violating our Town Charter. We will seek legal remedy against anyone who votes or signs documents through the town and personally. Thank you.
It's hard to believe that so many of us are here tonight, knowing full well how the vote is going to go. But I guess we feel so fervently about democracy, that we must speak our minds. It is disgraceful how Mr. Mannix, Ms. Lawler, and Mr. Lima have ignored the wishes of the voters. And don't say, Mr. Mannix, as you have said so often, that you've noticed a shift in the residents' opinions about the location of the library, and the town's purchase of the Belmont Building. That is downright crap. Where is the silent majority that you always wanted to throw in our faces? All I see, except for a few naysayers, are supporters of the library's move to the Belmont Building. How can you say, Mr. Mannix, as you did on August 19th, summary that, and I quote, "The town should never have purchased this or any liquor store," when in fact, we didn't buy a liquor store, but the town bought a building in which a liquor store had an existing lease? How flawed is that argument, when you turn around two weeks later, and put the town into a situation where it is in the loan business? The town has no right to loan $1,320,145 of the taxpayers' money to a businessman who is not proven that his marketing plan will succeed. If he is so sure his plan will work, he should get a commercial bank loan, so that the town's coffers can be made whole again. One final note, when I add what Pier Liquors paid for its subdivision, $735,000, to what Mr. Muta has negotiated with you behind closed doors, I come to a total of $2,805,145. Even Ms. Lawler stated that the property was worth more than we paid for it. I don't think that waiting three more years to make a $5,145 profit on the $2.8 million taken out of the town reserves is a good investment, while Mr. Muta is only out of pocket $750,000, and interest on the remaining 1.3-plus million. Funny how the town can have such a huge reserve that you don't question taking $2.8 million out of it, but the library can have a reserve that's earmarked for pensions and the builder. I think Patrick figured it cost us $9,000 a month in lost interest and maintenance fees for the building. So, $5,145 doesn't even cover one month's expenses. Shameful. As a matter of fact, since the council's entire reign, except for our knights in shining armor, Patrick and Jesse, has been shameful.
Lori Roman, 33 B Field, Oak Road, Narragansett. Narragansett taxpayers, please listen very carefully to what has been said tonight, and I am going to highlight some of the things that you should be knowing. The purchase and sales deal with PKB LLC or Carlos Muta is not totally about the library project. This deal in motion tells us about the financial irresponsibility, lack of transparency, and unethical secret backroom deals of Mr. Mannix, Ms. Lawler, and Mr. Lima. No professional commercial appraisal has been done on this property. No public sales advertisement, at a selling price that barely covers the purchase price, nor does it not cover the cost of lost interest to the town to reserve. Mr. Mannix stated that the town needed to sell the liquor store in the upper room, because the town should not be in the leasing business. Now, the three of you are putting the town in the mortgage business, and giving Mr. Muta the deal of a lifetime. Sorry, all the Narragansett businesses, you have not been given any chance to have a mortgage, and to kind of survive in our environment. A small down payment of $7,500, interest only for years one through three, and only at the end of three years, will Mr. Muta have to pay the balloon principal of $1,320,145. Mr. Mannix, Ms. Lawler, and Mr. Lima, you are bleeding the town's finances. You are acting in a self-serving manner, to fulfill Mr. Mannix's prediction, that the purchase of the IGA Belmont Building is a disaster. This deal with Mr. Muta is a financial disaster for our town, plus his eatery plan, because he doesn't, his concept, because he doesn't have a business plan, will negatively impact all the food merchants in the pier. The Picnic Basket, Nana's, Cool Bean, Dunkin' Donuts, Creek Trio, all the other pier businesses. Narragansett taxpayers, you should know that these are your tax dollars, that these three town council people are giving away. Mr. Mannix, Ms. Lawler, and Mr. Lima, you are truly three bodies with no financial brains. You don't have any legacy in this deal. You will be hanging your head in shame for the rest of your lives in Narragansett, and your legacy, you can smirle.
That's very, that's very kind of you. Very kind. It's great to go to the personal attack. Instead of just saying it's a bad deal. You could point out, your time's up anyway. You can point out, I didn't take your time.
You took it away.
Please sit down, Lori. You're divisive to this, in this tree.
Your legacy is a destructive thing.
Please sit down. Please sit down. Please sit down. Please sit down.
My name is Dr. Halawa, 24 Eagles has Terrace, Narragansett Island. I wrote a paper, because of this, and I'm gonna have Ms. Mary Kelly Nadu and Naomi McDonald also covering it out of the paper. Thank you. Narragansett Town Councilors Mannix, Lawler, and Lima have acted against the will of the majority who voted yes in 2016 for a new state-of-the-out library in Narragansett Island. In an all-out fight to prevent the modern state-of-the-out library at the recently purchased building, they are doing what is not only detrimental for the town's residents, but the latest year will most likely devastate local businesses. First, we had a backroom deal to sell space to the pier liquor store through an executive session. Everyone who knows about real estate recognizes selling a building without a current commercial real estate assessment via comparative market analysis, and selling a property without advertising it on the open market are bad ideas. Now, Mr. Mannix wants to sell the remainder of the property purchased for our new library to a company that wants to use this structure to create a food court in a retail marketplace. The proposed notes for today's agenda state that the businesses that we promote will dovetail with the activities and services of other business establishments in the pier. How do we create a food court in marketplace that will not compete with many of the local restaurants and businesses? If one opts to eat at a food court, he or she will not be taking his or her business away. He or she will be taking her business away from the local restaurants, or cafes, merchants that sell clothing, souvenirs, ah, and other memorabilia that the pier will suffer, since people may opt to make the purchases at the retail marketplace. We have many fine restaurants and businesses in the pier. Restaurants such as Crazy Burger, Trio's, The Picnic Basket, and Cool Beans, where our town solicitors own, and food trucks, all may find it more difficult to remain profitable with the new competition in town. For some businesses, it's so difficult to make profit in the winter, they just close their doors entirely. National-recognized Iggy's, Dog Boy's, Y'all House, to Monty Hand's Clam Shack, are examples of restaurants that shut their doors in the winter. Also, if less people go to our area establishments in the summer, many may be driven into bankruptcy. It does appear this deal will be a no-win situation. If the food court and retail marketplace are successful, it will hurt our local restaurants and retail stores. And if it fails, taxpayers may possibly be on the hook to bail it out. Let's not forget, a state-of-the-out library, the largest power, would be funded by others, not our taxpayers. We would have received bond money by a crew of voters, we would have received money through OLS, we would have had at least $1 million through the $500,000 matching grant from the Murray Charitable Trust, and additional $500,000 from the anticipated donations from donors. Instead, the president of the Narragansett Town Council is proposing to fund an out-of-state business with no track record of success, in doing so without the approval of the Narragansett residents.
Thank you.
Mary Nado, 10 Second Street, Narragansett. A state-of-the-out library provides multiple benefits, from providing educational resources to providing support services for individuals throughout their entire lives. Interference is costly, as is evident, for those who cannot obtain any employment. Interference specialties are, or those who are handicapped, benefit greatly from a modern library. Interference receives the biggest bang for the buck from a library, those who cannot afford to buy a computer or access the internet, or those who cannot purchase online databases for research, those who cannot buy their own books for study or enjoyment, and those who cannot afford to buy the movies or buy audiobooks. In addition, many people who do not have a social network are seen as a safe haven to gather, socialize, and get support. Clearly, we can benefit from a state-of-the-out library. Those in need will benefit the most. Thus, by opting for an expansion of the liquor store and adding proposed food court and retail marketplace, the town council members who are supporting this plan will not only be taking my needed resources from those most in need to better their lives, but will now be making it more likely for people to increase living consumption in a town that is already flooded with college kids and in off-season. We will also have a food court and retail marketplace to harm our local restaurants and businesses. Like Mr. Potter and his wonderful life, where Mr. Potter had complete disregard to the harm his actions caused on local hard-working citizens and venture falls, it appears that three Narragansett council members, Mannix, Lawler, and Lima, act in total disregard for the pleas of his residents. As a result of the actions of town council members, Mannix, Lawler, and Lima, it makes people think they are serving their own self-interest, serve interests, and political agenda. Empathetic pleas and testimony from elementary school-aged children to high school students, library personnel, local residents, concerned mothers and fathers, and people from all walks of life, not including limited teachers, teachers' aides, and all kinds of professionals, doctors, lawyers, professionals, go on deaf ears. In addition, the failure to acknowledge the $500,000 matching gift from the Murray Charitable Trust makes people wonder why how insensitive the decision of making the town council members happened to the residents of Narragansett. Mr. Potter was only concerned about making money regardless of the hurting cost to citizens. George Bailey almost committed suicide due to the actions of Mr. Potter. I implore the town council and the supporters of the Narragansett Town Council to rethink and back away from this deal, unless they want to forever remember as having the image of Narragansett over your own Mr. Potter. Let us hope that other restaurants and businesses will face financial ruin as a result of these town council actions. So, we were trying to get the pier back, and I hope we continue to do that.
Thank you, McDonald, 30 Kingston Road. While the deal may be legal, and the Town Council may have the authority to approve this deal, they do not have the will of the people behind them. Did anyone vote to lend their tax dollars to an out-of-state developer?
No.
In Rhode Island, we are all aware of many dubious politically-approved deals that cost the taxpayers of Rhode Island millions of dollars. The Courage Shilling 38 Studios, the UHIP fiasco, the Cooler, Warmer campaign deal are examples of ridiculous and very costly deals made without the consent of Rhode Island voters, but at the hands of politicians without regards to the consequences of their actions to the state's residents. While no one broke the law as, broke the law as a result of these reckless actions of political officials and has all the opposite side of taxes, what is legal may not be considered morally right if such actions cause harm to an individual or individuals. At one time in the United States, slavery was legal, as well as Jim Crow laws, but such laws were morally wrong. If this deal goes through and makes one man a millionaire when he flips the building eventually and puts many local businesses out of business, should we be proud and supportive of this deal? I will let the listener decide and answer that question. One last consideration for residents and business owners to ponder. Was any business person from Narragansett or Rhode Island offered such a generous enticing offer to open a business in Narragansett? The businessman for this deal is a Connecticut developer, Carlos Muta. Has this businessman been vetted? What is Mr. Muta's track record for opening up successful businesses? If he is such a successful businessman in his la, oh, I'm sorry, businessman, and his business is not at risk of failing, then why is he asking the town of Narragansett to help him finance his business? All I can do is shake my head in disbelief with regards to the actions of Councilors Mannix and his two assured follower leaders, voters in the Town Council. Ironically, Mr. Mannix, Ms. Lawler, and Mr. Lima have argued that people who voted for the Narragansett Library Bond Referendum did not know what they were voting for when they approved the bond for the state-of-the-art library. As I write this, I truly believe the majority of Narragansett residents who voted for Mr. Mannix, Ms. Lawler, and Mr. Lima did not know what they were voting for, as who would vote for council members who are acting in a way that hurts both the residents and local businesses in our beautiful town. And this is all written by Dr. Halawa.
Hi, people of Narragansett. Why are we making a food court for tourists instead of a library for the people? The answer would be because of three Town Council members who are insisting we give the Belmont Building a very fitting piece of real estate for a library to a typhoon food court. Do we not already have enough places to eat already? The answer is yes, but we only have one library, and that is why the people of Narragansett, from all political opinions, backstories, and ages, have came together as one group to support the library and help the town of Narragansett. When the majority of the council has failed to do so, we are already disappointed in three members of the council, and we will even be more disappointed if the library does not get their rightful piece of real estate.
Mary Anne Kuchenko, 221 Watering Farm Road, Narragansett. I'm presenting a chart.
Terry, don't we have a provision that charts cannot go up there without being approved by the Town Council?
I was just going to ask. I was just going to ask.
Yes, we do.
Yes, thank you. I was just going to ask if I can present this chart. It's from Narragansett.
It's only PowerPoint, not, it's not a, it's only a PowerPoint.
It's on the government, it's on the Town Council.
Yes.
It's our governmental organization. I don't think the camera can see it anyway. I mean.
I just want to, if I can present that, it's from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from the Town of Narragansett. May I display that, please?
Yeah, you can describe it, but I don't know where we're going with this.
Okay.
Government 101.
Thank you. Okay, as you can see in the Town organizational chart, the Town Council reports to the Narragansett residents. The will of the majority of the voters need to be the governing principle, but this is not what's happening with the present Town Council, who are functioning according to their own will and not the will of the residents. The Town Council members, Matt Mannix, Jill Lawler, and Rick Lima, irresponsibility is manifested in the seal as they sell the space purchased for a new state-of-the-art library. The financing of the building is not in the best interest of our town. The three Town Council members mentioned, that I mentioned before, should consider the majority vote a mandate to carry out the will of the people. We, the residents of Narragansett, feel our democratic rights are being violated by the seal and the town financing of our future library. Thank you.
Barbara Rampon, 10 Marsh Lane, Narragansett. One second comment that I'd like to make. First, why isn't this buyer getting banking financing? Isn't that what he's seriously done?
If you have, this is the comment, so you give us the comment, you criticize. Is that a question in the answer section?
I'm not criticizing.
No, you may comment, criticism, cheerlead, whatever you want to do, but it's not a question in the answer section.
Please don't.
I'm clarifying if you want.
What is it, what is it for the town of Narragansett to do this financing? And why wasn't this put out to bid? Why wasn't, why wasn't this property, number one, evaluated, assessed, and then put out for other people who might have interest in it? That's a really important question here. And all the smoke and mirrors that we've had tonight, to not divert people from what is going on. I don't know what it is, but there's something going on. In the discussion that you have with the Narragansett Times, Mr. Mannix, you said that the thing was to have the town bringing in revenue, and that a library wasn't going to bring in any revenue. Well, perhaps it isn't, but there's more important things than money, number one. Number two, I could understand that statement a lot better if this deal you were making with this man was more substantive, was going to show us that we were going to make money, but we're not. I don't understand why you are so bent on selling this property to this man. Is it just to get back at the library? I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what else to think, because why is the town desperate to get rid of this property? That's like, you know, I don't expect you to ask me. I'm throwing these questions out so the rest of the townspeople can think that same thing. And in closing, I do have one other thing to say. And this question is directed at you two gentlemen, I'm sorry, Mr. Burry and Mr. Poe. I want to thank you very much for your support and all your hard work that you've done. Mr. Mannix, I want to say that I take great offense at the fact that in the paper you called the people here a mom. I take great offense at that. No one here is screaming and yelling. People are expressing their opinion, maybe exuberantly, but it's not a mom. And I take great offense that you would denigrate my right as a citizen in Narragansett and a citizen in the United States to be able to speak my mind. Thank you.
I don't think anything that's said here tonight is going to change any votes up there. I'd just like to understand how a Town Council president with limited financial and real estate experience could put the town in a deal like this, and how Mr. Lima, with his extensive business experience, could understand that $5,000 a month to hold the property and put it up for sale and make tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars in profit does, just doesn't equate. And the idea that the Pure Liquors is so much better off owning their property because some evil landlord is going to put them out of business, if that's the case, if that's such brilliant information, Mr. Lima ought to be on a plane to the CEOs of Walmart, Stop &amp; Shop, and Home Depot and explain why the error of their business model is so detrimental to their holders, stockholders. Ms. Lawler, I just don't understand how Ms. Lawler is going to approach a potential seller and tell them that the property that they are going to list is actually going to go for less than the appraised value by the town assessor. Nothing has gone for less than the assessed value in this town in the past two years or more. Explain that one to a potential buyer, their seller, that they have to list their property below the assessed value, and explain that because of that, we're going to have to find a buyer who can't get traditional financing, so I want you to loan that person the money to buy your house, and don't worry, you'll get $5,000 a month until that's paid off. And don't worry, if they default, you can get it back. Of course, if it's bought under an LLC, it can be a commercial default, a commercial bankruptcy, which is going to take months, if not years, to resolve. This deal makes no sense, and I cannot understand how someone who purports themselves to be a professional Realtor and is going to tell the seller, we don't have to market this property, we don't have to advertise it, a buyer will appear out of the woodwork from another state, and don't worry, it'll go for the same value the assessor gave it, less than you bought it for. I just don't understand how that works.
She's going to be able to say that it was an erroneous purchase and that $400,000 a year over the next 20 years is what was in our budget in 2018 for this property, and she's probably going to be able, and we probably should, should probably be able to say that to a lot of prospective people, fixing the mistake.
Okay, the real cost, the real cost over 20 years for a homeowner is eight cents per thousand. Four hundred thousand dollars a house is going to cost that homeowner. This is, it was the worst-case scenario. This was all vetted.
Four hundred thousand a year, assuming it wasn't in 2018.
It's eight cents per thousand. It's $32,000 a year.
Just.
Per year for 20 years for a $400,000 homeowner.
Just go back to your budget work session notes from 2018.
And now we've projected less.
Not complicated. Four hundred thousand a year for 20 years.
Mannix, who's next?
Who's next?
It's not eight cents per thousand.
Who's next? Go ahead.
Nancy LaPosta-Frazier, West Bay Drive, Narragansett. Before I begin my statement, I would love some clarification. Earlier tonight, Mrs. Lawler voted against advertising in a vacation guide because she didn't want more people in Narragansett, but she wanted this perfect place to attract more people. I guess consistency is not that important.
Thank you for your comments.
I am. [applause]
Just say why it's a bad deal. Just say why it's a bad deal.
I don't want to waste my time.
Just say.
I guess it's official. Narragansett is now a.
Let's start you over.
Let's start, thank you. I guess it's official. Narragansett is now a, I know a guy or a gal town. Imagine, an out-of-state developer already behind on a similar project in Connecticut who has difficulty finding private financing rolls into town and secures a three-year, interest-only loan. My God, he saw the three of you coming from a mile away. But let's look at this situation a bit closer. Just two weeks ago, three of you self-righteously claimed that the town had no business being a landlord, and yet tonight, you are making the town a private bank for someone without a Rhode Island track record. You are willing to bankrupt his project, thus favoring an out-of-town developer over the mom-and-pop businesses that currently exist and struggle here in Narragansett. Not only are you turning your backs on them, but you're actively encouraging competition in an already limited year-round market. In the past, you've noted that Narragansett had a $2.8 million hold in the town reserves due to the purchase of the Belmont Building, but now, through this misguided transaction, you're guaranteeing that Narragansett will continue to have a $1.3 million hold for the next three years. Shouldn't that be a cause of concern for you, or are you just passing the buck, no pun intended, to the next Town Council to worry about? Mr. Muta or the LLC is under no obligation to develop the Belmont Building. Using our money, he can just sit wait, get an up-to-date appraisal, market it professionally, make a killing, and laugh all the way to the bank about three council people sold cash into the library and they've got proprietary responsibilities. Thank you.
Can the person with the flashlight that's shining right at us, the thing that the light, your lights on, thank you, because it's, you're getting right to our eyes. Thank you.
Come forward, please.
My name's Casey Montneri, 21, Checkered Berry, Treadle in Narragansett, Rhode Island. I want to start by saying I absolutely hate public speaking, so just kind of bear with me. I agree with a lot of what's been said here tonight, and I don't want to go back over a lot of that, but just touch up on some things that are important to me. I've been a supporter of the library, kind of on the sidelines. I'm not here tonight as a supporter of the library, I'm here as a Narragansett resident and also a small business owner in the pier. My issues with this right now is that there was not the appraisal done, which is what a lot of people have mentioned, and given what Trio just sold for, I feel like you all have a fiduciary duty and obligation to this town to get an appraisal and to list it publicly. And that needs to get done so that we can get the best possible return for our investment. In terms of business, I'm here, before I opened my restaurant, I was at another restaurant for over 10 years, right down here in the pier. I know what the struggle is. We struggle for over 40 weeks a year just to be able to make ends meet, and I'm not alone in that. Emily is here, and she currently is running the place. I ran before, and she can tell you how difficult it is. I'm not one that is afraid of competition at all. I think the more small businesses in the area, the better. I was upset to see Marcos go and would love to see another small restaurant in there, but the bigger things, a food court, I don't think is best for the town. And when you look around at all the empty restaurants and buildings in the pier and all over Narragansett, I think you can kind of see where I'm coming from with that. Let's see. That's kind of it for that, because like I said, I think a lot of people touched on the other thing. One thing that I wanted to point out to you guys is the bankruptcy of this guy in Connecticut. I think that that's really significant, and you should take a little bit more time into looking at that. And I believe it's Mr. Davis, right? You pointed out that the state of Connecticut where he does business gave him $400,000 in grants and money, and I just wanted to know if you guys were aware of a lot of the court documents that have been filed against him? have been filed against him? October 18th, 2017, a collection agency filed a lien in the court in Connecticut for over $400,000, a little bit over $400,000. On September 21st, The Hartford Business Journal, I believe it was, ran an article about how the state of Connecticut gave him $400,000. Two weeks later, the loan was, the lien was discharged. So, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't seem to add up here, and I think that rather than rush to do this, maybe we should get an appraisal, maybe we should list it publicly, and maybe we should get what's best for the town in Narragansett. So, thank you for my...
Thank you.
And all of you guys, your legacy is going to be fighting for what you believed in, and you're all doing a great job, and I really think that you three should consider what your legacy to this town is.
Hi, Emily Burns, 144 Boone Street in Narragansett. I'm the manager at Crazy Burger on Boone Street, and I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to everybody here tonight that clearly supports our business year-round, including Jessie and Patrick. Thank you, I appreciate the focus on local business. I just wanted to kind of point out, I came here tonight just to kind of listen to everything, I had no intention of speaking, but it's just crazy to me what I'm hearing, and I have to say that, you know, Crazy Burger is not only a popular restaurant in Narragansett, we have a reputation nationwide, and we struggle for nine months out of the year to pay our employees. I sometimes don't get paid every week on time, I've been there for almost 15 years and I love the place. We also struggle in the last couple of years to have enough employees to staff our restaurants, so I'm curious, who's going to work at this place that we're supposedly going to be opening in the pier with 20 kitchens? Because we're one of the most popular restaurants, and people like to work at Crazy Burger, and I don't have enough staff. So, if I'm in that position, I can only imagine what some of the newer businesses that are trying to make us a go in Narragansett. You know, I grew up in Wickford, I went to URI, I graduated from URI, I worked at Crazy Burger while I went to URI, and now I live in Wakefield, and, you know, it's just such a shame to see what's going on here and that the town of Narragansett is not being listened to, and there's no support for the people that really live here and really, really matter. So, that's all I have, and thank you again to everybody.
Listen Crawford, 64 Lambert Street. I'm agreeing with everybody here tonight, totally, all the financial stuff is really disappointing, but on top of it, it seems like this is a fantasy situation, not a conceptual even. But being a conceptual makes it seem possible, but this is a fantasy situation. Do you guys live in this seasonal community that I live in? Because like, two months out of the year, it's banging, it's Narragansett party, and then it's asleep. Places are shut down at 9:30 at night, dead. The only way that this place is going to survive for those nine months is with, with a liquor license, or the BYOB, and the URI kids that flock to the farmer's market are going to be drinking there the whole time. That's what this place is going to be. It's going to be a party scene if it's to survive. Isn't that how Narragansett survives? The winter? I'm born and raised, I know the way in Narragansett works. We can fantasize all we want about how amazing it's going to be in November, December, January, February, March, April even. It's dead here, so why are we trying to put some Chelsea, New York City marketplace in our sleepy little town? We can't even get our local businesses to thrive in the town. Why are we competing with a pier marketplace? Do they really want that kind of, I mean, look at our farmer's markets, our, our food trucks. They've taken years to establish themselves, and now we're going to put something in there? 20 kitchens? It's really a fantasy. We need to dial it down, and we need to get serious about what can actually go there. If not a library, what can really go there? It's not this. Thank you. Before you speak, just one, just jump one thing, just one clarification. What I said was that this will be a draw for the shoulder seasons we have in town, we don't have the tourists here. We need to reason, bring, bring people here so they can go to your establishments. So, that's a clarification, that's what I said, just for the record.
Hi, Jamie Day, 69, E. L. O. I'm not a public speaker, I've actually never been to the town council meeting, but I've been paying attention to what's been going on, and I felt really compelled to be here tonight and to speak. So, I'm speaking to a pose, acting on a Belmont IGA proposed library property so quickly. I wish to remind you that there was a referendum, and the outcome was plain. It now seems the council is contemplating acting without sufficient time for the public to express themselves, which is what I wrote down, because I get nervous when I speak, but I'm hearing the public express themselves. So, I therefore suggest that this matter be tabled until dedicated separate hearings can be held for the voters to express themselves before the council takes any action. After all, after all, what's the hurry? So, this building, and I've been in this town, I've raised my kids here on the beach, I love this town. It's been sad to see that, that building be empty for so many years, and there was a, now I'm not going off my notes here, but there was an excitement, like, oh, cool, the library! I actually had to spend the last week in the library because my computer was down, and I was reminded, because my kids are older now, what a beautiful community it is. I felt welcome, everyone, you know, was really helpful, showing me where things were. And what I see here tonight is not only a divided town, but a divided panel, and it's, you know, we really, in today's day and age, where things are so divided out in the world, in our small town, it's, we want people to be on board with this. It would have been great if the fella, Carlos and his LLC, if he was here tonight to say, "Hey, this is especially since this has been getting all this press," someone who is willing to show up and to stand here and to say, "Hey, I support this town, and I'm part of this town, and I want everyone to come together." And all the other issues that were on the thing tonight, you guys went through, I'm like, boom, 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 yes, 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 and this one is such a big divide, there's just more of an opportunity to take the time and do the right thing for our town. Thank you.
Karen Recco, Weptill, Lakeview, Rhode Island. Moved here about four years ago, I grew up... I grew up up north, moved here about four years ago after 20 years in New York and New York City, and I can say Chelsea Market was a bit of a bust financially. It's kind of chugging along, not great. That said, I've been following this, kind of curious where it's going. It sounds to me like we're not getting our library, which is a bummer. But I think, you know, the reason why I moved here with my family, it's a great small community, I did not want to be up north. I loved the school system, I loved that it was, the town did its own thing, we weren't regionalized, and the situation with the library is making me concerned that perhaps this is the first step in regionalization of the town and being absorbed by SK, and I don't want that for my kid, I don't want that for the town, I don't want that for my family. So, that is my concern, I'm worried that this is part of a much bigger issue that we're not seeing because of the concerns about the fact that we don't have a library. That's it.
They took this town off the pier school today, and they put up an F. Pier school, they took it down, and they put up an F, library, school. Because the pier school is perfect for the library, this building is not. And you guys don't get it to your head, but it's not a good deal, it's not a good deal for a library, it's terrible.
What's your name and address, then?
I don't want to tell anybody. My name's Ricky Lee Wobbs. I live on Muffer Hill. My name's Robert Holmes, I live on Robson Street. But anyway, this is ridiculous. This whole thing is ridiculous. I'm native, and I grew up in town, and this is part of the town. It doesn't need to be, every kid that goes into fourth grade in Narragansett schools gets a computer to use. Every kid that goes into fifth grade gets to take one home. You, that library is great for kids, that's all. People don't, they get their movies, they go there, they have coffee. No one reads books like that anymore. They've got computers.
Excuse me, let me finish.
Why would I read a book?
Sir, please address me, just sir, please address me.
Why would I read a book when I got a TV? Anyway, an interest-only loan, how can you go wrong with an interest-only loan? They're paying interest only, you get the building back, someone's paying the freight on it for three years, or you get the building back. Why beat this guy Carlos into the ground? You don't even know him, nobody even knows him. I can do discovery on just about everyone in here and find out some dirt about him. So, I don't know why he did, I think he's going to open up a tattoo parlor.
What was he doing there?
I'm sorry, I think he's going to open a tattoo parlor. And there's a place in Newport that's getting shut down, it's called Antiques Homrie on Thane Street. They have antiques, consignment, jewelry, they're looking for a place, they would be perfect down there. They, it's got the square footage, they're interesting, it's perfect. The library is a, it's like a no-brainer down there, it's awful. The pier school is perfect, handicap bathrooms, kids' bathrooms, access, the kids go to South Pier Road, you know how many kids...
Don't yell out, please.
You know how many kids graduated from Narragansett High School last year? 100, 100 kids. The school is half-empty, the other school's half-empty, and that one's half-empty. What are we doing with three schools that are half-empty? You move them right over to South Pier Road, it's a no-brainer. They already took the N. D. and put up an F.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Schaefer, 33, old time Rosie. I have a question here, any rhetorical question? So, if the town is in the business of providing homes, there's a lot of residents that... There are plenty of residents would be more than happy to have some residential loans to be successful here. So, why does the town get into that business? Then, the profits stay, the money stays in the town, the profits stay in the town, and we just go all out? Sounds like a perfect plan. Then we help the community, we help the town, the town citizens, everyone wins. Anyways, that's not actually the reason I came up here. I actually found this really interesting article this past week, speaking of mobs, the corn, difficult concepts. In their 1858 debates, Lincoln pressed up, just to clarify, what kind of America he really wanted, one that had slaves or one that did not. Douglas claimed, "Only to stand his mob role." But why, Lincoln asked. Why was he choosing to die on the South Hill? Why would applying this principle, the mandate to protect the South from interference by extremist towards, end up portraying freedom of millions of black Americans? Was it possible, Lincoln suggested, that Douglas secretly preferred his slave society to a free one? There's a lot of parallels from discussions that were taking place tonight with this. Ultimately, what this is about is being on the right side of right and wrong. Everyone knows which side is right and which side is wrong. In the long heart, heart of history, the library will succeed, maybe tonight, but by the time my kids are old enough to be part of the society, be taxpayers, they will have a library, they, they will be proud of it, that they currently go to, that they currently read books, I guess they don't read books, they're free there, but books, lots of books, they read lots. Google replace a library. So, with what Lincoln said, what Lincoln challenged Douglas, I ask everyone to challenge themselves of what is right and wrong, and those who really challenge themselves know the difference. Thank you.
Well, anyways, that's over, five to the top. I first would like to comment on the comment that the schools are half-empty. I had my first day of high school today, and I could not get in by anyone in the hallway because it was completely filled, so that is just an appalling statement to me. Since many students couldn't make it tonight because of school and the fact that the meeting goes so late, I've taken some responses from students in my grade and the grade above about why they want a library in their town, and so I will be representing them, so. Quote, "I want it in a bigger building because we can have a larger environment for the community, and more clubs could be held at the library, like social bonding and book clubs and stuff like that. It would be an overall achievement for the community because more people could get interested into reading and come into this building to make new friends or read." End quote. Quote, "Libraries are used by homeless or jobless people to find and apply to jobs, to work on their resume, and to seek out resources to help them escape poverty." End quote. Quote, "Libraries are used by students who are unable to study at home due to having loud or bad environments. Without a proper building, students and the life will be forced into the same crowded conditions they're trying to escape." End quote. Quote, "Free knowledge is, is important in just society. More space is more knowledge, is more access to the public. Libraries are an important public place." End quote. Quote, "Because they can fit more books and more resources, which is especially important for students and parents alike." End quote. More people, more local people can be educated, more space means more books, more books means more educational growth, and the other one is much too small." End quote. Thank you.
Well, my name is Elaine Stannard, I live at 29 South Pier Road, and I'm a moderator at the elections. In 2016, when a bond passed, everybody said a ray. In 2018, when you were negotiating very hard to buy the Belmont Market for the library, everybody said a ray. A sign briefly went up on the front of the market, "Home of the new Narragansett Library", and we all thought it was a done deal. I don't know what happened, but, you know, the next election was when a bond issue comes up, I would say, "Well, maybe it can happen." I don't know if it can happen, and I think that's a real mon, kind of democracy. Thank you.
It's actually true with every bond item, it's an authorization to borrow, not a mandate to spend, so all the bond items, they're not, they're not mandates to spend.
Hello, my name is Paula Giles, 55, Lake Road. Want to thank everybody here tonight who has so eloquently expressed their concerns about this almost-done deal. I grew up in Rhode Island and spent a lot of my summers in Narragansett Beach, so I have a long history of loving this, this area, and I'm now living here full-time in Narragansett. So, tonight I came to this meeting expecting to hear all the arguments and hoping maybe some of your minds would be open to the comments, but two things really struck me as I listened. One is, why would the town of... One is, why would the town of Narragansett use our tax money to give a big developer a sweetheart loan? And number two, I was also struck by the fact that this is an LLC. Now, I'm not a tax person, but an LLC stands for Limited Liability Corporation. And I wondered why a big developer would want to set himself up with that kind of a tax structure if he's, you know, a big shop coming from Hartford. An LLC is usually something that is set up by, you know, businesses, small businesses that are just starting up. And there's a big advantage to having it in LLC because it means that if you go down the tubes, you are not personally liable for any of those losses. So it also struck me that this $5,000 a month payment this guy's gonna make for three years is no doubt gonna be a tax deduction for him as a loss on his business. And which kept making me ask even further, why would three of you want to get in business with this guy using our tax money when the community so much wants a library because it is for the community? And then as I read more descriptions about what he was going to do, this was gonna be a European-style cafe selling fresh produce and fresh fish. And, you know, the local business owners have a right to be worried that that's gonna hurt their business. But I have another theory. My theory is that this guy is gonna come into this town knowing full well he can't compete with the other restaurants. He's gonna come in looking for a big tax break and he's going to use the three of you who have supported him so far to get what he wants, which is to get in, not open anything, sell it, and get out. And by the way, the little bit I know about an LLC also means that, you know, once an LLC goes down the tubes, the only money that you can recoup if you're one of the creditors is whatever's left.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to know, a guarantee from all three of you, that if you don't have a financial interest, are your friends or your relatives in this deal because it stinks to high heaven?
Thank you.
Margaret Rogers, 68, Earl's Court. In your motion tonight, Matthew, which is pure rubbish, you would have us believe that you want a flea market to complement the other small businesses. My fellow residents, you're being gaslighted again. So a few questions for Matthew tonight, which he won't answer. These are just questions we all have. You say the flea market will not compete with other businesses, so I'd like to know how you arrived at that conclusion. Did you visit and speak with Mark Zimmer, the owner of the Picnic Basket, or drop by the owner of Cool Beans? I'll take that as a no. How many other small businesses did you visit? I heard Jill Lawler state tonight that she received an assurance from some guy no one knows that he won't put a gelato shop in the food court. Did she speak with the owner of Nims? I'll take that as a no. So Jill Lawler seems more concerned over the last 10 months about people stating their name and address when they come up here than she is about forcing over millions to an out-of-state developer. And tragically, with all due respect, our town solicitor was engaging in a little bit of gaslighting of his own tonight. So who is the buyer, Carlos Muta? We know he's declared bankruptcy, is behind schedule in his Parkville project, and declared major debt, millions of dollars of debt in his Chapter 11 filing. So the town solicitor tonight would have us believe that he's a reputable businessman in the state of Connecticut. What a joke. The reason he's being propped up with a $3.5 million bond from the state of Connecticut is because it's an attempt by the state of Connecticut to help revitalize a neighborhood which has a crime rate 170% higher than the national average and which was actually recently targeted in 2017 by the FBI's Violent Crimes Task Force and the Harvard, Hartford Police's NARC Division because of the massive amount of gang violence and drug trafficking in the Parkville section of East Hartford. So that's why Governor Malloy decided to throw some cash his way to see if he could do something for East Hartford, Connecticut. But you've decided that this guy, without producing a business plan, is a good fit for the seaside community we all live in. So who is he? He lives in my neighborhood supposedly, on Gibson Avenue? I don't think so. His name is on the Narragansett, Rhode Island rental registration form and I've never seen a Connecticut plate in the driveway since he bought the house.
Thank you.
By the way, he bought the house as a single family and he got a sweet deal and turned it into a condominium. You know, Matthew, you say thank you to me and that disrespects me because you're not thanking any of us here. And I was going to say...
I'm trying to run to you. I get lectured about democracy all the time, but there's a misunderstanding about how democracy works, which is you come to a meeting, you make your arguments, usually in a respectful manner, but some people obviously can't do that. And then there's a discussion and then the elected body votes. My first term, I was on the minority on a lot of votes. I expressed it. I could have come forward and I could have grandstanded and grandstanded.
No, Matt, you never had the guts to approach a podium, that's a reality. You sat quietly in the back and said, "No, because you didn't have the guts."
Thank you.
No, but Matt, you... You were very laughhard. You laughed the hearts of a public servant, but like a tick man, you just laughed.
And the next person who behaves like that, we will take a five-minute break.
Do it!
No. I said, the next person who behaves like that is gonna be removed.
Philip Cody, 109 West Morland Street. So with the anticipated vote of the town council this evening, you will now have countermanded the will of the people, which had been clearly expressed in a 2016 bond referendum for the new library. In past town council meetings, Ms. Lawler has stated that elections have consequences. And theoretically, she's correct. But apparently, that's only true sometimes because bond referenda don't count if you got the right town council people out there. What you three are doing here tonight is just plain wrong and it's unexcusable. Now to the matter at hand. During the last town council meeting, one of you three stated that the town should not be in the real estate business, renting or leasing property. So how have you rectified this? You've turned our municipality into a lending bank. With the proposed three-year loan to Mr. Muta and PKV LLC, the buyer's from out of state, he's an unknown entity, and as multiple people have pointed out this evening, he's hasn't been vetted properly and you've done your due diligence. Mr. Mannix, you state in your summary of this motion that the loss of successful businesses like the IGA and Pitt and Patio have caused the center of town to lose its vibrancy. I don't think there's any question that it's lost its vibrancy. In point of fact, though, these were not successful businesses. They failed. They failed for whatever reason, seasonal business. Your desire to get things back to the way they were during your childhood does not constitute a good business plan for this town. Mr. Mannix, you and Mr. Lehman, Ms. Lawler have decided to turn down millions of dollars from all this when you decided not to proceed with the library project. You have failed, you three have failed miserably in your fiduciary duty to this town and to the citizens that you're supposed to be representing. Shame on you. Your legacy will be to have given away the center of town yet again to a developer whose business model for a food court may well be just as successful as the IGA and Pitt and Patio would. This guy's gonna lose it and he's gonna flip the property. And unlike you three business geniuses, he is going to get an assessment and he's gonna list it and he's gonna make a bundle on our backs. Please don't forget that even angry mobs are concerned, disenfranchised, and informed voters. I want to thank Jesse and Patrick for their patronage and support of all this time, even though they represent different spectrums on the political front, they get it. They're here to represent us.
Lori Kelly, Wildfield Farm. So this seems disturbing in many ways. Yes, we at the library believe the will of the people of 5,109 people who voted for this new library project should be respected. Not one of you sitting up there got anything like 5,100 votes. So sincerely, when people go out and vote, we should listen to them. But some of the things need clarity tonight on this proposed sale. The way the PNS reads, it looks to me like no cash deposit was required before this deal was negotiated. Is this true? Would anyone like to answer? Mark Davis?
It's not a question and answer period, but...
Okay, well, then we'll go to the press and maybe they can get to the bottom of it. Because I have emails that say, Ms. Davis, I know there are at least three people who tried to bid on this building and received an email that said in part, you know, let me find where it is on my thing, "Make a reasonable good faith cash deposit and I will show it to the council." So if you were negotiating with an out-of-state guy without allowing our wonderful local developers, of which many of them live in town and would have interest in the building, I think that's a fiduciary responsibility that you walked away from. But I'm not...
I'll answer the question because it's out of the way.
That's all right.
So my understanding is that there was not a deposit put down with that offer.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, you speak glowingly of the Hartford project. Is it on time? Is it open? Do we know any of this? Or are we talking about theoretically, he's promised this deal, then he's also promised Hartford, but we've seen nothing out of him? So again, I know you won't answer, but again, the press could probably find the articles on that. It does seem that there is no town ordinance that permits the town to lend taxpayer funds. Can the solicitor point to any ordinance, charter, provision, state law, that permits Narragansett officials to directly lend taxpayer dollars to any private individual or business? And again, rhetorical for now, but we hope that the solicitor will investigate this with due diligence before this goes forward. And it should not be, in my last two years of experience, it should be researched everywhere in the state and town to protect the taxpayer, of which everyone out here is a taxpayer. And in the businesses that spoke out, I want to repeat that Jill and Matt raised the commercial tax rate to 140% of residential, which is a burden on these fine people who serve the community of Narragansett. And we go out and we give free money to someone else? How about helping the people that support our community?
The tax rate for commercial was actually reduced 10% by the council last term from 150 to 140. So I think that's an important point.
Yeah, but the single tax rate was low for four months and the new council...
But it was never put in as, it was never, it was never a tax change in the budget. It was a theoretical, it was a theoretical change. So there was a reduction to 10%.
It would be nice, guys, it's open forum. I don't have a timer.
It's not open for, Carol. It's not open for, open forum later.
Wouldn't you guys argue before we got up?
Carol, I haven't put your timer on, so I, and I want to, so that's a fact. Again, we get misled with things that aren't true. And I'm not gonna be lectured by a board of trustees that had over a half a million dollar surplus that is squirreled away of taxpayer money. Again, over half a million dollars of taxpayer money. I'll say it again, over half a million dollars of taxpayer money that is squirreled away and was supposed to be used to fix things like the roof and they didn't do it. So I'm not gonna be lectured about that. I am irresponsible for it.
Carol Thornton, Tank Cross Road. Prime real estate, commercial property. 2018 assessment, $3.4 million. And we are selling it for a bargain basement price. Voting, 67.8. Zero votes from the taxpayers for what's gonna happen this evening. Zero votes, 67.8 for the bond issue. I'm asking for you to table this this evening. I'm talking business. I'm not talking library. I'm talking financial fiduciary responsibility. Okay, I was actually looking forward. I've been here before and people that have projects, they come, they have a media presentation. I was looking forward to see if I could support this buyer. No presentation, no buyer. Mark Davis did try and to represent the buyer, but that's not good enough. I really wanted a presentation. I wanted to see what would this concept look like? Maybe it would be good, but he's not here. Then we talk about the risk for the town. First of all, we shouldn't get in a mortgage deal. That's my taxpayer money and nobody asked me if I did that matter of fact. When I was looking at this $50,000 deposit, $700,000 are closing, only paying interest. How come I, we didn't know about that? I would have some cash on the table. This is a perfect setup. This is terrific. I could have made a bundle on this, but I wasn't able to do that because everything was hidden in executive session. So that's unfortunate. Concerns I have about the buyer, I mean, he could be a fine gentleman. I'm not knocking the guy down, okay? Proof of funds, zero. Business plan, zero. Do we see something wrong here? You know, and, you know, Ms. Mullie, you're a, I don't even see how you could put your stamp of approval on this deal. You know better. You're a professional. And I feel bad about that because you're gonna put your stamp of approval on this deal. Now, this buyer, okay, in Connecticut, has his place open? No. Construction behind, yes. The construction started out at $3.5 million. He's now up to $5.1 million. He's not using any of his money, okay? He's not using his money. And he's back to this carpet asking for more money for his plan because of all the construction upcharges that appear to be going on. This is a terrible, terrible deal. I'm asking you to table it so that gentleman can come back and present to these taxpayers and myself his plan. Maybe it's good, but I'd like to see it. Thank you.
55 O'Seale. Now, I personally would have preferred a meeting here in which we would have finalized the library in the $15,500 square foot, but nobody could get along. And we unfortunately are getting close to the deadline where the town is going to be out of money. $2.8 minus what we have of a liquor store. 2.8 minus what we have of a liquor store. And I laugh at Bill Bain having a wine tasting up the second floor. How anyone in this community couldn't believe Bill Bain after all 50 years of mismanagement is beyond me. So we're stuck. And I, as a member of the finance committee, I want to get as much back as we can. We are getting a down payment. To me, this is an insful purchase more than a mortgage. admittedly, there's a balloon payment here, but we're talking about a losing structure. I can't count how many times that 15,500 square foot has failed. It's failed, it's failed, it's failed. We have someone now who's willing to take a risk and it might work. I think it's quite correct that students might get more fascinated by it and that would provide a year-round business. The risk is there. I think people feel that we have adequate reason, we can attach adequate resources of the person, we can take it. And so this may affect my golf game tomorrow, but personally, if you feel, and Mark feels, that there is coverage of failure if this project fails, it's better than having an empty building.
Thank you.
Carol Stewart, beautiful seaside Eastwood Bluff resident, Foster Lane, currently loud when I left at 9:30. But that's another story. I want to emphasize the necessity for vetting and research and gaining as much information from someone who's going to purchase a building in our town. And people have mentioned before, business plans, there's such things as SWAC analysis. I worked for a large corporation, I developed contracts, I had to oversee them, I'm not in the real estate business, but, and then I was on the economic development committee for this town, which was not terribly successful, but I saw the failures there in attempting to revitalize the pier. I've made suggestions to a number of people over, over the years that I've lived here, trying to say how to make this town more lively and business friendly. I've talked to people about the lack of helping businesses when they come into town and try to run a business and I go to it and it doesn't have any hours on its door and I'm saying, who's in charge of helping these people make successes? I've done this on my own because I cared about the town. I still care about the town. I did my research, I found out about Mr. Carlo's move home, I didn't have his name right, found out about his loans, his revitalization of a drug-infested downtrodden section of Hartford, his attempt to do something there and how he was going about it. So therefore, I started looking at his, what he wanted to do here. And I said, can this be successful here? So I researched, and that's what I want to know. Did the town council do its due diligence? Did it research, do you know what food courts should be, where they should be located, the demographics? You need pedestrian traffic, you need foot traffic, you need it to be in a busy complex so that, it's a spin-off, people, it's an impulse place to go to usually. Now, I know they say it's gonna be a European destination environment, but whatever it is, it, it's not going to be in a, in a location that has the demographics to support it. Our town is losing population, we know that. We know what the population is in the summer, we know what it is for nine months. We want to encourage families and all, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going over. But my point is, my last important point that I wanted to mention, food courts have to be successful, need to be in a busy location. Food places that are impulse dining places where you just pop in, need to be where there's traffic and people and there is none in the pier. Now, the other point is, I will just mention very briefly because I know I'm going to be cut off, what else I researched? Because there was a comment in the Sunday about a flawed argument about libraries helping revitalize.
Do Carol, why don't you share that with Terry? Share that with Terry and then move to the speaker. If you can give that to Terry at our vote, please.
I certainly will. Because let's think about demographics and foot traffic. A library is busy all year long with everybody, little children, moms and dads, senior citizens. It's traffic.
My name's Joni, I'm Walsh Route, I live on 122 Low Ture. This is my very first town council meeting. I have to say, I'm very impressed by the pash of the community. We're talking about a library, we're not talking about a casino, God forbid, coming to Narragansett. But I think what's struck me mostly is the support for the library, no support for this other business coming to town. My question, not for an answer, where is the support? Is there any support? Well, apparently a handful of people. Is there any support for this venture? It seems there isn't.
Thank you.
Susan Amoruso, West Bay Drive. Usually I don't have anything written down, but I actually put some notes down because it's my understanding you were talking about the bond issues not needing to be spent. In the 20 years of bond issues in Narragansett, there's been six passed, the library was the second highest and the only one not to be spent. So I'm pretty sure that that's fact. So you can talk about, but we don't have to do it. But this is the understanding, when you pass a bond issue, that it is a vote by the people, do you want this item? And you expect to get it. So since it's the only one we haven't gotten, that's kind of... And as far as I agree with the woman who just spoke, because I sent an email to all the town council members, of course, I get a response, never from Mr. Lima or Ms. Lawler. And it was all about how libraries are, you know, they faded a little bit, but they're making such a comeback, they generate such community spirit, such a volume of businesses because it's foot traffic. And as I had my grandkids with me, we went to the library, then I let them go into the businesses and a lot of them, I mean, they, some of the doors were shut, and this is a nice afternoon, I went in to a couple of them and they all supported the library. That was their big hope. They said that would do the most for their business, not another food area, you can phrase it any way you want. And as far as this person, I said this last time I spoke, where's the figures? Where's the proof that this is such a good deal? And once again, Narragansett Town Council meeting, that's not doing it for me. And you three saying, oh, but it's gonna be this, it's gonna be that, you're not buying it. You're, you know, you are gonna float part of this loan because you're residents of the town. But I've been here and even for little, small establishments, nothing of this size, where they're buying the spot themselves and not asking for anything from the town. There's been the owner here, there's been a lawyer, there's been a detailed plan, hours of operation, it, it's so, I don't see anything. This person couldn't take the time to show up and face this crowd because he knows he's not doing anything to support the town. He's running against this town and we're a lot of people that won't support it. And I looked into his other places, it's way, way behind. I didn't know the crime rate, but that thing is full of delays, he's already up to his ears in debt. This is like Kurt Schilling, all boring. And all my friends have said, oh, the money, someone's making money off this and it's not the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Reading a paper, I don't know what paper it is.
And we can't hear you.
The treasurer, the treasurer, Seth Magazine released this year, Debt Affordably Study. And it mentions in Narragansett, the town comes dangerously close to meeting the recommended limits for governmental debt services. So I'm always interested in being fiscal responsible, if you will. And, you know, the existing library works. Do we really need a larger library in a different spot? The existing library is, I think should be open night to night. And well, why aren't we open night to night? Surely we should utilize our existing facility to the maximum.
Their rights, Emily, you stay on topic, please. Can you just stay on topic of, of the purchase? You can have time ago before I have to come about the library.
Oh, you, so it's not supposed to, purchase of a library? I don't think we need, I'm not so sure we need a purchase, a purchase of the, of extra land when the existing, existing real estate works. And if we can do what we have to do with the existing real estate as it is now, why do we have to spend money on something else? Appreciate it, thank you.
Tom Hines, Five and Polper Drive, Narragansett. I just want to make an observation about process. Unlike those of you who've been lucky enough to have resided here all your lives, I'm an adopted son of this town, discovered about a quarter of a century ago and the rest is history, we're here for time now. At a stage in my life, I worked in the state of New York and I was on board of an entity known as the Job Development Authority, which granted funding to entrepreneurial entities that could produce jobs that would be worthwhile for the state citizens who needed good work. I will tell you from what I've heard tonight, what has been purported as a representation of what this quote-unquote "business plan" is, which by the way is all hearsay, because we don't have the person who's making these claims present, we're taking it secondhand from representations of people here in the room, but even that piece, even those pieces of it that we've heard so far, I would tell you that as a member of the Job Development Authority Board, I would have never reviewed a proposal like this because it would have never been vetted by the most junior member of the professional staff of the authority. It is a lax substance completely and is devoid of content. I think it's a disservice to the taxpayers, to this wonderful town to have something that's so nebulous and ethereal and has been done behind closed doors presented as a reported deal. So based on what we've heard, not of which is direct or documentary evidence of what an actual business plan would be, I think it's foolish, very foolish to go through. Thank you.
My name is Maggie Reitstein, I live at 111 Wood Haller Road. I grew up as Margaret Gershkow at 16 Modern Road in Narragansett. And I've been listening tonight to all the impassioned arguments from your taxpayers, from, from the people of Narragansett. I really do not understand how the town council can reach any decision they want to table at this point. You've had enough, enough reasons of holes in the presentation and the very fact that Mr. Muta is not here to present what his plan is. I was kind of surprised at that. I do know the value of a library. I have a grandmother, a four-year-old grandson who looks forward every week to the day when he gets to the time when he can grab a satchel, he'll walk to the library and get five or six more books for this week. I've also come back to this area after living in a lot of other places in this, in this nation, in places, big urban areas where they do have food courts, like the Grand Market in Los An, in Los Angeles. And the lady who did her research is right, you need foot traffic. So you need foot traffic 12 months of the year. You know that you have 12 months of the year, that you have people using your library. I'll remind you, when Gina Ramonda was introducing herself to this state and first running for governor and facing an incredible fiscal desperate situation in the state, she was talking about services that she felt were important and she did not become. And she was talking about her grandfather going down to the Providence Library and educating himself and learning and going forward with his life because he had that library. And the last thing I'll leave you with, because I know, okay, I'm almost out of time, I have seen, since I moved back to this area, I've seen, this is the third example, where I've seen a, a town gets in the New York Times, people think that they're gonna become the new Southampton, people told Evan, the glass blower in Wakefield, that, you know, they were the new South, Wakefield was the new Southampton and they were gonna raise his rent three times. He went on to open a new area and has a thriving business. People told Payne and Karma that they were going to, they were over in Peacedale and they, the landlord came in and said, no, 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 I can get way, way, way more rent. None of that happened, came to pass. And I'm afraid that the same thing is going to happen here with this idea. I know you all five care about this town. Please table this. Thank you.
Thanks, we're in Sunset Shore Drive, Narragansett. My one question or statement is, where in the world is Carlo? Thank you.
I need a langer, 241 Crown and John Gardner Road. As many of you know, I am a Realtor in town and I honestly can't believe this deal. I would never have written this PNS agreement without some built-in, there's gotta be some guarantees here. You've got the guy putting down 2.5%, usually you put down at least five. He's shown no proof of funds. He is not getting a mortgage, so there's no mortgage clause. Reason he's not getting a mortgage is because he can't get one.
Right, right.
No bank or banking institution would ever allow this kind of loan. Giving somebody a three-year term, 5%, 5.5%, with no guarantees that the town has right of first refusal, that is a very big mistake. The default should be spelled out. And besides that, I have a question about your inter-local trust, which is your insurance carrier. All towns carry, have to be insured and they're insured by the inter-local trust because it would be prohibited to get commercial insurance. So I'm asking you, is there any clause in your inter-local trust that allows you to be a mortgage backer? That allows you to lend money? Because if this guy defaults, you are gonna need money for legal fees to get yourself out of this. So are they covering you for that or is that exclusion? I have recently read the inter-local trust for liability and proper property coverage for the Bonnet Shores Fire District, of what, which I am a council member on.
of which I am a council member on. And I have read it cover to cover. I'm not sure any of you have. That's a big issue, very big issue. I also ask you to table this and get more information, as well as see what kind of built-in guarantees you can get. Because this is not a sound business transaction.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Tansy. I don't reside in Narragansett, but I represent it as a state representative. I've spoken to people all over the state at the time since this has been listed. In fact, I've heard about it, and I honestly could not believe that it was true. And then when I saw it with my own two eyes, and it was listed, I have been making phone calls since Thursday, speaking to people and asking if they have ever heard of a town holding the note for a private business. And the answer to a T has been no. No one that I spoke with has heard of a town doing this. We've heard from someone tonight that it is against our town charter that the amount is in excess of what the town is able to do. And we just heard about questions about the inter-local trust. Where is the due diligence on this? It gives me no joy to stand up here and ask this question, but I feel compelled to. You all are about to take a vote on something that has only had a very brief public vetting and appears to not have a very good vetting to begin with, for it to even appear before you. And while I'm not an anchor, I can't think of the last time that I've heard of an interest-only payment, interest-only loan with a $1.3 million balloon payment. In fact, the last time I heard of something like this was right before the financial collapse. This was a common practice back then, when people didn't do their due diligence, when people thought that it was the boom time and that properties were just going to continue to escalate in value. That's not the problem, that's not the value. I beg of you to table this. I beg of you to not take this vote tonight. There is no rush to do this. And I ask, how can you do this to the town? So many of you, well, I've heard the criticism over and over again about how the town gave away the center of the town years ago. And I feel like that's what we're doing all over again.
Paullette Chambers, 40 Lambert Street. I just have a couple of questions to think about, and a comment. I remember when the four dealership on Woodruff Avenue was being proposed. That man came in with all kinds of plans. They even had bushes on the plans. So everybody knew what that place was going to be like. And what I heard between Jill and Matt is that, in fact, two different things were being described. A food court and some kind of European market. Both of them sound lovely, but we just... And so maybe we should hear what he has really to say. I have heard, even before this, that he's very much in debt and has not done well. My question about the agreement, the purchase agreement is, is there a guarantee that he will have insurance? What happens if the building burns and then he defaults? So, okay, the town gets the land back, but not a building. If there's no insurance and he's not, you know, he's not going to pay. And the other thing is, is there any stipulation that he has to keep that area, that building, in certain condition? So in case he defaults, we get something back that's still of value? And that those are just questions, if maybe that has to be in the agreement?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no one else, does anyone from the council have anything they want to add?
Yeah, I just got one more thing to say. I think, under the circumstances and the pulse of the community, I think we should, I'm going to put a motion out there to continue.
I would say we second to that.
I will second that. I think it not only gives the council and the solicitor time to look over the P&amp;S again, it also gives the buyer a chance to present his case publicly, which is something that he deserves a chance to do, and we'd like to see him, so I would second that, yeah.
Any commentary on that? All in favor of motion to continue?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No, motion fails two to three. All right, so let me go check the underlying motion. Going to the underlying motion, which is to approve the sale of the old Belmont IGA building to PKB LLC, the purchase price of $2,70,145, and to authorize the town in Narragansett an entry to purchase and sales agreement for the sale of this real estate. I just rescinded the motion. Don't get excited. We'd already said it once earlier. But I just want to make clear that it was the underlying motion we're back to. Any comments on that from the council?
Yeah, Matt, do you realize we've got at least one lawsuit? Possible, there may be others. By voting on this to not vet this project out further, you're opening the town to litigation. Now, how is that saving money? I know, I know you're a conservative, you want to save money, but the pathway going there is a legal entanglement of financial unknowns. We should continue this, let this get vetted more, let's scrutinize that purchase and sales agreement. Do we have a first right of refusal? Get vetted more.
Yeah, actually, you know, related to that, I've heard the last few days from some local people in the community, business owners and others, that they were not aware... This is true, they were not aware that the property was listed. And the reason for that is that it's never been listed. It's been voted to sell, but never listed. And if you're not paying attention to town council meetings, if you have other things going on, you have a family, you have a job, you're not paying attention to everything that's happening in terms of town business at these meetings. So why are we rushing to sell this to somebody from out of state that doesn't have the money? When this could go out and be listed, and you could give other people from around here a chance to put in their plans and to put in their bids.
Since January 22nd, when you propose this to put the building back on the market, I still don't know what the asking price is. I mean, that's the basics of all market. You've got to have some kind of asking price, list price. Can you tell me that, what the price is? Don't...
We've offered it for second, Patrick. Is there anything?
But what's the price? What is the price?
We've covered this, Patrick. What?
Ricky, do you know what the list price is? Jill? Anybody? The list price. What the hell is the list price of this?
Patrick, we've covered this, we've talked about it.
No, we haven't covered it. Give me the answer.
Why can't we hate it?
So we have, um, we, there was a mention of a lawsuit. The lawsuit, the basics, no, there's one. There's one. There's one lawsuit. So where's the lawsuit? Which lawsuit are you referring to? Which lawsuit are you referring to? Who's the plaintiff in the lawsuit?
Tell me what it is. I don't know, it turns into a lawsuit.
Well, which, like, why do you, what's? You brought up the lawsuits. Share with the public the lawsuit.
Tell me the lawsuit.
The lawsuits, we have a second. We had a letter today, right, regarding problems with the deal. And I think we've clearly marked, our solicitor talked about how there was no restriction put in that purchase and sales agreement, or the deed restriction regarding the... That's not what I'm talking about, and thank you for yelling out. Does anyone on this side want to speak to this motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Motion approved, three to two. Thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute break, thank you. Recreation Department regarding beach policies and fees for the 2020 season. A date that we're looking at. We usually try to send it off Monday, but we have Columbus Day, so the day after Columbus Day would be Tuesday, October 15th, at 6:30 PM. That would be the date and time of this. I just want to make sure that that works for the council members.
Sure.
Okay, so, and just so everyone knows what this is, this is, we do this every year. And this will give time, Steve, to prepare his, to prepare his findings and the data from the season. So, and then after that date, that we put on a motion for the new beach policies and fees. So again, this is for Tuesday, October 15th, at 6:30 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This motion's approved, five to zero. Item 22 is a motion to schedule a work session to conduct public interviews for all current zoning board applicants.
Second.
Discussion.
The only thing I'd like to include is, Jesse, is to also include anybody who might be watching tonight. So not only the ones we have on right now, but I've talked to a couple of them the last few days that have interests, so we can give them more time to apply. So if we could make that change, I would appreciate it.
So, sure, I can, you want to reread the, you want to amend it then?
Just we amended to give some additional time so anyone who is learning about opening a zone right now would have the time to put an application in.
We haven't picked a date.
Yeah, we haven't picked a date. If it's the wording, I don't think I have specific... Oh, all current zoning.
Current zoning, yes. That would be great.
So we could, so do we?
So does this mean that the people who are already on the zoning board, we're not going to put them back in?
They would interview them.
So if you interview them and want to put them back in, and you've got to interview everybody else, why are you interviewing everybody else if you're just going to defy and lose the amount?
Well, if we're fine, then we would...
Excuse me?
Sorry.
Excuse me, you have something to say? The judge, please.
If, if...
Now you're talking?
So basically, we would... And if we prefer the current applicant or the current member, we could select them. It's just opening it up to give other applicants a chance as well.
So, but Ricky makes a good point. We've been through this many different times and in many different ways. So the whole concept is you want to do the interviews for the open seats, because there's no track record of those people. But the people who are up there, we've, we, I mean, I go sometimes to zoning board meetings over the years. I know when appointments are coming up. I kind of get a feel for how they interact. So if my sentiment is that I'm going to vote for them, that the applicants who are coming in, that we're going to interview, and because this happened once, I remember distinctly, it was with Mr. Brunetti's father, and we interviewed people who were going for the seat, and he was the incumbent. And it was very awkward, because we kind of, everybody was in sentiment that they wanted to reappoint him. And yet, all these people came forward, and we interviewed them, and they didn't, it was like, kind of, it was almost rude, because it was like, we knew what we were going to do. The interviews were awkward, and then, that's why this has been this way. It's never been kind of settled. Does that make sense to everybody? Is that you have people, they come forward, they put their names with an application. If you don't interview them, you're not leading them on. But if you, if we, I guess what I'm asking the council is, is there a sentiment to make a change? If there is, you should do the interviews. If there's not, they're a waste of time, and they're actually misleading to the other members.
So this is, this is the honor of the promise we all made in the, in the forum during the election, that we said we would hold public interviews for all zoning and planning committee seats. So we're following through with that. Again, four out of five of us said we would do that, and I'm going to follow through and do that tonight. So I'm going to vote for that. I have no thoughts on whether I'm going to approve a seat for a current member. So I'd like to see all applicants to make a decision based on that.
I agree with Jesse.
The problem with that is that if they're an incumbent, their performance is based on their performance on the board, right? So we, you can go to those meetings and view that. It's really not the interview. It's almost like they sell you a bill of goods that they've been on for five years. It's totally opposite of what they've been doing.
We know about that. So, so part of, it's like, basically a review. You can ask them why they voted for certain things. You can ask them whether they're opinionated on certain things. It's not all about the votes at the meeting. Also, none of us go to all the meetings. So to be able to ask questions directly and find out the motives for things, that's the, that's the value of it, in my opinion. And again, if I say something while campaigning, I'm going to follow through and do what I said I was going to do, so.
Right, but it was a yes/no question in a forum where it's really about the open seats. I mean, that's kind of how I interpreted the question at the time. It's that we do that for open seats.
So if we can take it away from the question that we had and just look at the motion on the agenda, and the motion is to interview all. I agree with Jesse, I think we should interview all the candidates, and I'd like to have the others on the members, current members there. We might vote to put them back in the seats. We might vote to put somebody new in.
Could we just halt the motion and meet on the 15th and discuss all two boards, I guess this is the zoning board, and look at the candidates? If everybody's good with the candidates, I mean, Terry's providing the attendance record. To me, it's all attendance. Somebody's on the board, they show up, and they're 80, 90% of the time. They're in as far as I'm concerned. That's a warm body. They're making decisions. From what I understand, the continuity on the zoning board is just fine. So I don't, I don't think there's really a reason to pick through it, but maybe we should just discuss it on the 15th and see if there's a reason to conduct interviews at this time. So it's kind of like a...
I'm going to keep the motion as is, and if you want to vote that, that's your prerogative.
But if it was a different board, Patrick, maybe I'd be in agreement. If it was Parks and Recreation, sorry, Steve, not to make Parks and Recreation, but the planning and zoning boards are our two most important influential boards in town. They have so much say into the future of our town. So I just really do think it's an important thing.
I know the board, I know the attendance, I know the records. I drift in and out, and I got no problem with it. I'm here right at this time.
Right, if we're going to reappoint that, and we're going to interview other people, then you're kind of leading those other people on to the...
Speak into the mic, please.
Then, then you're kind of leading those people on as far as you want to interview them, but yet they're not even going to be up for the positions. I mean, if you want to make a change, that's fine. No problem. You want to make a change, the council can make a change. But the people who are there now, if there's not going to be a change, then I would say move on.
All right, so then, this is a motion to schedule a work session. Is there a suggested date for that? Probably would be maybe late October?
During a, I would suggest an off night to do that, so we're not rushed coming to the meeting.
So that'd be the 28th, probably?
Sure.
All right, what time? Do we have a date?
I would say 6:00, give people time to get back to work.
Because also, we give Terry time to schedule it if we went forward. Okay, so that'd be October 28th at 6:00. But there's discussion, yes?
Thank you, Council President Margaret Rogers, 68-year-old's court, Narragansett.
We hope to enact a policy requiring the town council to conduct public interviews for individuals seeking reappointment to the zoning and planning boards.
Yes. Yes. No, but I'd take a hard look at your attendance, right? Yes.
Yes, I'd also like to take a look at televised at both the planning and zoning board meetings.
Okay, so there was nothing ambiguous about that question. Matthew, nothing. That's another example of how you gaslight the audience. There was nothing ambiguous about that question. When the League of Women Voters asked you that before the election, we all heard it, okay? So now you're backing down, and you're saying, "Well, that was my interpretation of the question." But you didn't deliver a nuanced answer, and you have, in the yes/no portion of the debate, often delivered a nuanced answer. So don't gaslight us. We know what you said, and now you're backing away from it. Why? Well, I have an interesting question. Number one, Ms. Lawler wants to add her homies that she's recruited to serve on the zoning board who can approve the new food court. Because she's gone out and recruited people. That's her M.O., right? That's why she wants to open it up and extend the panel to people who have not applied previously, and the poor soul that's been waiting two or three years to have her... You recruited someone out of the EDCs to serve a melancholy. He's done a great job, but you have a track record here.
Thank you.
So I was kind of ready to vote to schedule the interviews, but after that routine, I, you know, I'll go back to my initial instinct, which, and you can play the table you want from a yes/no, which you know there's a whole two-hour debate that we go through. And we have always said for six years that this is hard when you have, there's an incumbent, it's the incumbent who's going to be reappointed, and everybody knows a track record, why are you going to waste the time with non-incumbents? And it's really about the open seats, that's really what it's about. That's why you need interviews for open seats. For people who are already on the boards, we can go and watch them. That's part of our duty as elected officials, to go, that's the interview, right? That's the interview, is you go and watch their performance. So, so, thank you, Meg, but I, you know, that's.
But if the question says very specifically, would you schedule interviews for reappointments and you say yes, might you just say no?
I really don't even remember the question.
I just heard it.
Right, it's great, but I don't, I don't remember every nuance, and there was a minor point when we're talking about single tax rate and library and bigger issues, it's a yes/no question. When you're confronted with a yes/no question, you basically say yes or no.
Why do you say no?
Because I, I said what I said, I thought it was for the open seats.
When you say yes, it really means no.
So let's stick to just, can we stick to just?
Yeah, you got, it's really, I mean, it's, you've all watched the debates, you know, it's a thing where you're yes or no, and it's, I thought it was about the open seats. So is there a motion? There's a motion on the table for scheduling this, this work session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No, motion fails two to three.
I can't handle another meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, Terry, what?
It's after 11:00 PM, and according to the town council rules, no item of business other than that of adjournment may be brought before the town council at any meeting unless such item is introduced before 11:00 PM.
I was hoping to congratulate our town manager, as per.
Is there a motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
Most of them.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
You said say the open forum, then you don't.
Motion approved, four to one. Thank you, good night, everybody.